Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've asked Reverend Van Zant, our chaplain for the fire department, to pray for us tonight, and also one of our ministers at one of our local churches here.
By the size of this crowd, I just am thankful that you didn't ask me to do the benediction.[41.64][41.64](Laughter.) Let's pray. Father, thanks. Thank you for this city that I've lived in for 11 years, and I thank you for the leadership of this city. And I just pray that you give them leadership, that you give them direction and purpose and passion and direction in all decisions that need to be made, and we thank you for that. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a third republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hope all of you have a copy of the agenda, and if you do, get out your pen, because we're going to do a lot of things different than what appears on that agenda. The first item to come before us is the consent agenda, and that is item number 1 through 10. We will pull off item number 4, 5, and 6 to discuss those individually, so be prepared for that. The motion that will be made in a moment will concern items 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 9, and 10, and then we'll go back to items 4, 5, and 6, and 7. Councilmember Hurley?
Good morning, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. In just a moment, we'll be ready for that motion. Following the addressing of those individual items that are on the consent agenda, items 4, 5, and 6, we will then address the issue regarding the vacation of positions that you'll notice is scheduled on page number 5 of your agenda under section 551.074, and also deliberation regarding the city manager. That will occur before the Vistors and Citizens Forum. And the rest of the agenda is pretty well in place, so just be prepared for us to insert the matters regarding the positions that are being recommended to be vacated, as well as the issue regarding the city manager, following the consent agenda. So with that in mind, Councilmember Hurley, I'm ready for a motion regarding the consent agenda omitting items 4, 5, and 6.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve consent agenda leading 4, 5, and 6, but also amending item 7 to reflect the legal IRS allowable for mileage traveled in that resolution.
You heard the motion. Councilmember Sutton?
That's for a second.
Councilmember Averitt?
That was for a second, ma'am.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion. There being none, if you'll register your vote, I will display it. Okay? We move now to item number 4, and Mr. Torres, do you want to introduce this item or call on your department head for that purpose?
Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to George Fowler, who's brought this item before the council tonight.
Okay, and what this is, while Mr. Fowler's coming forward, this is regarding the awarding of a bid for the janitorial service for the Haltum City facilities. Mr. Fowler?
Yes, we've been using same janitorial service for about the last three to five years, and I guess we went out for bid this year under, we have not been satisfied throughout the period with the present janitorial service. So we went out for bids, and we did it a little bit different. Instead of just going with low bid, we offered a deal for best quality. We received five bids. Low bid was a manual services, and that's actually the same company we are using now. It's a different name, but it's the same owner. They were low bid of $67,000. The next two bids in line were about $12 a year apart, $117,000. After looking at and knowing the type of service that we'd receive from the present janitorial service, we did not want to continue with them. I think I can say that throughout the period of contract, I've had complaint, and we've worked with them. The city manager's met with him several times. I know department heads have talked to me on a continual basis that they're just not getting the job done. So with that in mind, we went ahead and did a study on the next two, and after checking references, it was the opinion that Courtesy Building Services was the one that we recommend. That would be, well, actually, it's $117,000. But you have to take in mind also that that's an increase of the square footage that we are, from what we're doing now. We're adding, you know, a new recreation center, double area, a public municipal service building, so we also required some different hours, some additional hours, and we expect to get a much higher quality job when we finish.
Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Fowler regarding this recommendation? Councilmember Williams, and then Councilmember Fowler.
Mr. Fowler, on the increased footage, do you have any idea percentage-wise what we're going to be increasing? If you put a number of that.
I don't have a percentage. I know we doubled the square footage of the rec center up to 13,000 square feet. We've been doing about 5,000 there as far as cleaning. Same thing with the Public Works Building, the municipal building down there. We doubled the size of it. We added some additional requirements on them as far as what they would do, as far as what we required, and we told them upfront that we weren't looking for just to get by a job. We were looking for a quality workmanship, something that, you know, the citizens of the Haltum City wanted to come in and be proud of seeing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fowler, the additional $65,000 that's going to be required to, if we accept this bid, where is it proposed that this come from? I see that it says that city council needs to pull it out of contingency fund, $55,000 of it, and the remainder to be from other line item savings. I guess, is that throughout the year?
That is correct. That was our proposal, because the current monies that we had budgeted would not cover this $117,000, and that was an available amount of money within the general fund that conceivably could be used. But we wanted to make sure that you were all very clear that approval of this contract to this company would mean that we would have to utilize that money.
Okay, so currently, we're budgeted $53,000, and then we're proposing to have a budget overrun to $117,000, or a budget overrun of $65,000 to provide the services necessary?
Correct. That would be correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. In this, in the last contract that we had, I asked some questions about some out clauses because of their performance when they were cleaning the buildings. Is this contract that we're going to have with this new one, I see it's for three years, but I don't see a copy of the contract itself, are there going to be any out clauses that if we're not satisfied with their performance that we can get out of the contract?
Most definitely. Before we sign a contract, we're going to require a clause in there. We already have a clause in there that I think either party can relinquish, ask for out of the contract 30 days, I believe it is, what we're...
30 days.
It's 30 days.
The same provision was in the current contract.
That's correct.
Why didn't we ever exercise that?
Well, we kept working with them. We kept thinking that, you know, by pointing out some things, we could make them do better. And I'll be honest with you, in over the recent months, I felt that they did come around and do some things and tended to business in a little bit better way, but it still wasn't the quality that we were looking for. And we knew their contract was up for renewal. What was the expiration date of the contract, George?
Actually, it's October 1st.
October 1st, and we knew that was just a few months away, so we thought, well, let's just, let's just put them on notice that we're going to be seeking bids, and that's what we did. We told them that we were going to be going out, and they would be eligible to resubmit a bid if they chose, and here's where we are. I'd like to point out one other thing, if I could. Earlier in the summer, staff considered this item quite a bit and really looking for other options. We felt like because bringing on the new facilities that we were going to have, most certainly our janitorial expenses were going to rise. We just didn't know how much until the bids came in. But we considered the possibility of hiring several staff to do this work ourselves, and we crunched the numbers, didn't think that we could actually hire people internally for this $117,000, having to provide them supplies and equipment that our current contractor provides for us. We really don't have any equipment, buffing equipment and things like that, so we felt like it's still going to be cost-effective for the city to go ahead and spend $117,000 versus hire its own people internally to do this service.
Councilmember Sutton? I'm sorry, will you finish? Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. George, are any of these businesses based in Haltum City, and if so, did that enter into the evaluation criteria for the selection of the firm that you chose?
There's none of them actually based in Haltum City. However, the number two business, which was, I believe, $12 less, does have a office or a building out on the north end of town, out there off Whites Creek right there, in those little row of office buildings. They have a, you know, it's kind of a standby place type situation, but they do have a Haltum City tie-in.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Fowler? Okay, I'm in line for a motion regarding item number 4. I see no lights come on. Am I to interpret that? Okay, there we go. Councilmember Averitt?
Mayor, I make a motion we approve of item number 4.
Councilmember Hurley?
That's a second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion. There being none, if you will, register your votes, and that passes by unanimous vote. Item number 5 has to do with the, an interlocal agreement with BISD for shared costs of the SRO officers, and...
Chief Burton is going to address that for us, Mayor.
And I do have one speaker's request form, and that will, that will take place after Chief Burton makes his presentation and then has an opportunity to answer questions by members of the council.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Torres, citizens of Haltum City. As you know, we have been in discussions way before I got here with the Birdville Independent School District about sharing costs of the SRO program with the city of Haltum City. And the last meeting of the school board, those negotiations came to fruition with their proposal to fund approximately 50% of the costs related to our SRO program, which is keeping an officer at the Shannon Learning Center and one at Haltum High School, for $50,000. And that's what's before you tonight, is they have agreed to do that for this year. They have chosen to not commit to a contract any longer than this year because they'd like to look at their options for the future. And I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, members of the council, any question for Chief Burton? Okay, there being none, thank you, Chief Burton. We have one citizen who's requested to address this subject, Mr. Jack Lewis. Mr. Lewis, if you'll come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the And you have five minutes.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I'm Jack Lewis. I live at 4600 Sable, here in Haltum City. I remember last year about this time when this SRO officer situation came up, and the general feeling from the council at that time is to do away with them, and the four, five mothers and others, myself, came down and spoke on behalf of keeping them, and I'm for keeping them. But I did have a question, and I thank the chief, and thank you for answering the question. That's the main reason I wanted to speak on it. It was on the consent agenda, and I had some questions, so some of them have been answered. But I wanted to comment on this year, situation of who do they answer to? We have the city's responsibility, and the number one priority, in my opinion, is to protect the people. We've had a good police department. We have a good police department. We funded them in the past, and now we're asking another taxing entity, our school taxes, to be, some of them rechanneled into police protection. Now, if that is true, to some extent, other organizations could ask for shared expense. So I feel that our tax dollar that goes to our school system be used to educate our children, our tax dollars that go to the city should be used for the responsibility of the city. It's been that way ever since this city came into existence, and nothing has changed. In fact, last year, there was a motion after the tax rate had been set by ex-council member who made a motion to raise taxes, and you can't do that after you've already had a public hearing on the tax rate. And the city attorney acknowledged that, and it was stopped. So the taxes were going to be raised to pay for these. Now, my point is, the taxes was raised a tremendous amount this year, and yet we're asking another taxing entity, in my opinion, probably more important than the city, with exception our police protection, to help fund this. So I sort of have a problem with the two taxing entities funding the responsibilities of one or the other. But I do appreciate the answers that was presented. I am for them, and I think our children need protecting, if it does cost. But I do feel like the city is shirking its responsibility and shifting some of this load to the school district. They're just as hard up for money as the city is and as us senior citizens are. So I feel like we should look at this, this is a one-year deal, and there's probably no big deal with it. But I've talked with some school officials, and one thing, it's going to cause the other taxing entities to ask for the same thing. So we've set a precedent here for our school taxes to be used for other taxing entities' responsibility. Thank you for listening.
I want to make a comment on that, on some of the things you'd stated, and I don't, if you need to be seated, that's fine. Councilmember Williams has his light on, and after I make a comment or two. With regard to the matter of the cost-sharing of police protection in the schools, I happened to be on the Birdville Board at the time that started, back in '91 or '92, and I had a chance to attend workshops and conventions and conferences, not only here in Texas, but across the nation, and the question of how to fund those was one that was talked about and debated a great deal. And the bottom line is, there are many ways those can be funded, and what you've just said is your opinion, and it's one that a number of other people, not only here, but in other places, have. Many school districts provide their own police force and use the tax dollars they generate for that, believing that to provide a safe place for students to learn is a part of the educational process. Others have a cost-sharing similar to what we have this year, so there's a wide range of ways school resource officers can be funded. The first year, it was funded 100% with federal money. The second year, with 50% federal money, and the third year, 25%. And since then, Haltum City and the other cities in BISD have carried the load. And we knew even back when I was on the board, the day was coming when the cities would be asking us to help cost-share in that responsibility. And that's kind of where we are today. So just a little feedback, a little comment about what we're doing by taking action on this tonight is not unusual. In fact, it's becoming more and more commonplace as tax dollars get a little bit tougher. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. You can be seated, and I'm not going to need you. I'd like to clarify something. About a year ago, yes, there was some consideration, a little over a year ago, about the schools and the safety of the schools. There are also items on the budget, is how much money we had coming in and how much money we had going out. Could have been a council member said that they didn't want to furnish the SROs. I don't think that this entire council said that we didn't want to furnish SROs. I happen to be the one that came up with the suggestion of the share program. I know we care a lot about our children. I care enough that I went to the last couple of school board meetings when they were discussing this. They've gone all the way to the problem, into trouble, that they're looking at starting their own police department, where they have complete control of what goes on. But I'm happy that Haltum City can work with our BISD. I just want to make it straight that we did not say that we didn't want to protect our children, didn't want to have the officers there. It's just that we've had so many cuts in our tax that we have to have some kind of help, and this is the only place we can have it.
Okay, I think we have no further lights on. I'm ready for a motion regarding approval of this resolution regarding the cost-sharing with BISD, the SRO officers. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number R-2003, dash 00, dash 055, dash 04.
Have a motion, a second. Councilmember Henderson?
Second.
Okay, council, okay. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, if you'll register your vote, and when I display it, it shows unanimous. Item number 6 is a resolution, and Mr. Torres, I believe you had placed this item, or you're responsible for introducing it at this time, please.
Yes, sir. This item has been a project we've been working on for several months, pretty seriously, and I guess the end result here is a proposed agreement we brought before the city council between the city and Mr. Haltum regarding our ultimate resolution of the standing water there on their property at Cedar Crest and Denton Highway 377. I've kind of outlined the, or summarized the agreement in the cover sheet for you, and I'm not necessarily going to go through that unless someone has any questions about it. But I guess the bottom line is, the city would intend to place an underground storm sewer in that immediate vicinity sometime within the next year. And over the course of the year, the city would direct any extra dirt that we have from one of the many construction sites that we have around town. We're always having the need to dump clean fill somewhere, and Mr. Haltum has agreed to allow that fill dirt to be placed inside the pond to eventually fill it up. There would be a temporary channel that would cut across the Haltum property that would basically allow any drainage runoff during the interim period to run through the property and not stand there, not pond. Mr. Haltum would be providing compensation to the city in the amount of $5,000 for that portion of work that would be on his property, and Mr. Haltum will be granting us easements necessary to put the underground pipe in the ground. We hope, I've gotten a verbal commitment from Tarrant County that they would participate with us on the project, and we have also met with TexDOT, and we feel that there's probably some level of commitment we'll get from them for some part of the materials of the pipe that would be placed underground. Again, there's not a definite timeframe for the placement of the underground storm sewer, but I think the ultimate goal is to start filling in that pond as soon as we can, and this is the agreement. Mr. Haltum has reviewed it, along with his attorney. Our attorney, Wayne Olson, has reviewed it. Been a number of changes come back to me, and we have an agreement here with Mr. Haltum's signature on it for your consideration tonight.
Members of the council, questions for Mr. Torres? Councilmember Fowler?
Mr. Manager, it's shown to be $116,000 in material funding, or materials necessary to complete this project, and it says plus labor and plus equipment. What are our estimates on that?
We, I don't have an estimate in terms of manpower. I was more concerned with the cost of the pipe, because that would be an expense that would be in addition to city operations. We would, we originally, when our former city engineer put that cost estimate together, our plan was that we would utilize labor and our own labor and equipment to do it, but we were probably going to have to go hire out a large track hoe to set those large boxes. However, with the county's commitment of manpower and labor, our commitment of manpower and labor may be very minimal if the county will actually do the work for us. It's purchasing that, those concrete boxes that will be our biggest cost. So I can't tell you specifically what that might run.
We know it's at least going to be $116,000.
In materials, yes.
What, and it shows here under our comments that we don't have a funding source for it yet identified?
That is correct. And that was my concern with bringing this item before you. I've had conversations with a number of you. Mr. Hurley has helped facilitate some of the meetings we've had with Mr. Haltum, and I think the council was concerned with getting this project up and running. We don't yet have that money identified. You're absolutely correct, and that's the reason we've worded the agreement to allow us 12 months. So basically, we would have a whole year to complete this project, and they're one of several potential sources of funds. But again, I don't know what the funds are going to be, because I'm really counting on TexDOT to participate with us on it.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Torres on this item? Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Torres, I've got a question. By us taking over this project, are we taking responsibility for the water going onto his property, or is it, how much actual pressure are we putting on the state? Because in my opinion, I think a large majority of that water comes from the state, but I will say that once we have got it drained, that we've had some fairly heavy rains since then, and they're not filling it up as fast as it was, I wonder if maybe the drainage going through the back wasn't stopped up on that, or was stopped up, not allowing the water to run out?
Oh, it clearly was stopped up, and, you know, I think we've shown that we can keep that water to run through there and eliminate any kind of ponding. As far as what kind of responsibility we absorb by participating in this project, you know, our only level of responsibility will be to keep that water flowing out of there over the course of the upcoming months, depending on how long it takes us to complete the underground portion. Once we get the pipe in the ground and the back, the clean fill is brought into the hole and filled up, there won't be any more water on the Haltum property. That'll be a lot, basically, and all the water will go underground at that point, and no one will even see it, and there won't be any impact on any nearby residences.
Well, we're looking at $130,000. I don't know what it cost us to get the dam busted, to get the water to run out to start with, but when we did that, the water ran out, right?
Correct.
If we were to make the owner to keep the dam open, where the water would run out, make a trench through there, at least through the wet season, you know, we had the same problem up on Saucer Drive. They gave us some $250,000, $300,000 prices on fixing stuff, and we ended up coming up a lot cheaper with engineers getting some of the public works. Could we, on a, maybe a trial basis, cut a channel through there to see if that would carry the water through that?
Maybe I don't understand what you're asking.
We don't, we don't have $131,000 right now to start this project.
Right.
We do still have a mess out there on the highway, and I still constantly get calls about it. You know, it's overgrown, it needs to be cleaned up. The water is part of the problem. The water's not all of the problem. Putting dirt out there and putting underground drainage system, you know, that will take care of the problem, but what about all the overgrowth that's out there right now, the stuff that's growing 20 and 30 foot tall?
The brush is also going to be addressed, it is addressed in this agreement. Most of, I'm not going to say every bit of the undergrowth will be eliminated by us working around filling in that hole. The agreement states that all the large trees are going to be retained, so the end result of the project is going to be a very... So, uh, the end result of the project is going to be a very attractive looking lot, under, undergrowth removed, large trees saved. It, it should be very attractive. And, and it, I guess I didn't understand your question about the ditch. I mean, the, the, the contract provides for us to construct and maintain a, a ditch through there that will carry all the water out. So if, if there's some blockage or something, it would be our responsibility to go out there and clear it to, to keep the water flowing through.
Well, since we don't have the money to do this project right now, uh, probably, I, Mr. Fain, they have told me it'd probably be very minimal to cut a ditch through there and make it sure that that, I don't know that it'd be our responsibility or the owner's responsibility to keep the dam clear to where the water will go through there.
It would be ours under the terms of the agreement because, because Mr. Halton obviously doesn't have the equipment to do it and, uh, we're going to have to have equipment out there on some frequency to, uh, to level the dirt and, and, but yes, the, the agreement provides that it would be our responsibility to keep it clear.
Well, there's going to be some people come with problems about spending taxpayers' money keeping, you know, getting a private piece of property maintained or cleaned. Uh, my opinion, it's the owner's responsibility to get all the brush out and, you know, to get it cleaned first and get a ditch there. We may not have to spend a hundred and thirty-one thousand.
That's true. I mean, that's, that's a worst case scenario.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, but keep in mind, Mr. Halton in this agreement has, has agreed to provide us five thousand dollars, uh, twenty-five hundred upfront and twenty-five hundred at the end of the, of the term. And that's the compensation to us to keep that ditch cleaned out and to level off the dirt that gets, uh, put in there.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is I think that the owner of the property needs to go ahead and take care of the brush. If, if, if that was on a different piece of property on Denton Highway, Belknap or Twenty-Eighth Street, it wouldn't be allowed to be kept in that manner. And, uh, the complaints I'm getting are water, high grass, uh, mosquitoes breeding. Uh, we've had the council chamber full before complaining about this. Uh, council did make a large effort to try to get something done. We did finally get the dam broke. Uh, the water's gone, but, uh, what we did have was a swamp full of water. Now what we have is a swamp without the water. We still have all the trash, the brush, the undergrowth, uh, catches stuff off the highway and, uh, I don't know if, I'm sure our code enforcement officers would tell us that there's many violations up there on that piece of property and, uh, I don't think the city would go to anybody's private piece of property and fix it. Now, I know five thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred at the front, twenty-five hundred at the back, that's a good gesture. You know, i- if I had that piece of property and had all that mess on it, it would sure be worth five thousand dollars to me to get it cleaned up, but I feel like it's the property owner's job to get that cleaned up. We can put a ditch through there. It looks like the water's going to run once we get the dam out of the way. Uh, Mr. Fowler and I had talked about a, uh, water retention pond there. Uh, I think there's a good possibility for that. Uh, I think this came up February or March this year and we discussed it and there were going to be problems because people were complaining the mosquito season was coming up. Uh, we've still got water standing, uh, stagnated in that pond.
That's, that's correct because we haven't had an agreement to, to, to really go in there and do the work that needs to be.
And, uh, okay, we've got an agreement. How long is it going to take? I've got a problem and, and I want this cleaned up as bad as anybody does, but I've got a problem with our budget problems we have going in there and estimating to spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to clean this up when it's probably the property owner's responsibility to clean it up. Now, once he gets it cleaned up, now maybe our responsibility to make sure the water doesn't run on him, but I, I think he has a responsibility to clean the pond up. I don't, I'll open it to the rest of the council. I don't know how they feel about it.
One thing, uh, before I recognize, Councilmember Fowler, to, uh, speak a second time on this subject, I, I want to mention, uh, with regard to the cost of this, we're hoping Text Dot will step up to the plate and I know council, uh, I know, uh, State Representative Griggs has been out on site and, and looked that over and has talked with him in Austin as well as the district engineer and, uh, uh, has set up some meetings and has, uh, tried to use his, uh, uh, position as the state representative in the area to call attention to that and, and help get us some funding through, through Text Dot. And I know we move pretty slow sometime with items here in Halton City, but, uh, Text Dot moves even slower than we do. Uh, but I, I do know that is, uh, this is a multifaceted, uh, challenge we have here and, uh, we have resources that can help with this and, and we're hoping that Text Dot, with the continued interfacing with them, will be able to come forward and help with the, uh, uh, with the big boxes or with the cost of that or in some way participate because this is partly their problem. And, uh, that's the point that's being driven home by, uh, by Representative Griggs, uh, to, to Text Dot. So we'll see how that works out. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, and when you're through, we'll, uh, entertain a motion. Uh, I do have one speaker, uh, on this and then we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, just to inform the people a little bit, this is a three-part problem. It's, it's partially Text Dot's problem, it's partially the city's and it's partially Mr. Halton's. No one is completely at fault on this issue. Uh, I have a problem going in and spending a hundred and sixteen, as a minimum, a hundred and sixteen thousand of the rest of taxpayers' money on private property. And I think this is a situation where at best we do a fifty-fifty shared cost with Mr. Halton, uh, or if we can get it into thirds and do it with Text Dot, I think that's more than reasonable, but I can't in good faith come in here and ask the citizens to, to spend a hundred and sixteen plus labor and equipment and the other money that we've spent. We're, we're in tough budget times, people, and I, I can't sit up here and justify doing that and then ask other people to vacate positions and do everything else that we're doing. So, you know, uh, Mr. Halton's been a, a very good person in this community and been a pillar of our community for many, many years and, and I feel like that it is part of our responsibility, but it's not a hundred percent the city's and I don't think that five thousand dollars is, is, uh, is a substantial enough amount of money that we should go in and spend a hundred and, who knows, a hundred and sixteen to, to possibly a hundred and fifty or who knew, who knows where it may go. So I, I just wanted to make that comment, uh, and, and hope that the rest of the council takes that in consi- consideration. Excuse me.
Uh, we have one speaker request form filled out, Mr. Jack Lewis, if you'll come forward at this time. You have five minutes, uh, Mr. Lewis, if you'll, uh, uh, give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Jack Lewis. I live at forty-six hundred Sable here in Alton City and thank you for listening again. That was on the consent agenda, agenda also and at the time I filled out the speaker's request, I didn't think it's going to be addressed in the public, but I would like to comment and I agree with Councilmember Williams on his, uh, statements, most of them, and, uh, Councilmember Fowler, I believe it is. We do have a shortage of money, just like everybody else does. Mr. Halton has a shortage of money, but basically we're dealing with a piece of private property. I've got property that's private that I own and I've got drainage problems and I have not asked the city to take care of them. And the water, everything that comes from the state, the water does. All the water that comes down is from heaven. It comes down to the state, but private property, they ought to take care of the problem. Now, if he is in violation, if he's not in compliance with his city ordinance, he should be treated, that property owner should be treated just like every other property owner. Now, we mentioned the state and the county and the city. There's three taxing entities. Every one of those taxing entities, their funding comes from the taxpayers' pocket. So it's all of our money and when we go into an agreement with a private property and take over responsibilities, we're in that situation right now. There's an item on the budget night dealing with the city, going in and taking over the responsibility of a private party. And I can see just from these comments that when we go into an agreement with a private party, you can just see problems later on. Who they're going to come to, the one with the deepest pockets, not the private owner, but the city. So I think it's sort of shaky to have an agreement to go in and, uh, bring a piece of property in compliance with the city code at the taxpayer's expense and, uh, not do it for everybody. In fact, the water that comes down on my property, and it does at times, comes into the sunroom, it comes from the street back of me. So if the city would go up there and fix the curb and gutter, I've got water standing on Sable now that breeds mosquitoes this past week and curbs are jacked up this high and we've asked the city to repair that. That's a public street and there's nothing done, but yet we're looking at going into a private piece of property and, uh, doing some work on it at taxpayer's expense. So I think the council should consider seriously all the ramifications, especially after going through what we have in recent history and taking over the responsibilities of people who have private property and the city accepting the responsibility to take care of it. So I hope that you folks will think about that before making a decision.
Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Lewis, uh, Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I'd like to speak in defense of this project because number one, city manager said that he outlined some rough guidelines that we, we went into. We initially talked about this with Mr. Halton and, and laid out a two to three-year program. There wasn't any money expected to be spent upfront other than the availability of city employees and city equipment and not with the purchase of any, any, uh, cans or anything else. Number one, the city's at fault because we drain everything off of Stanley Keller behind the shopping center into a flume that goes under the highway and on to Halton's property. No one's recognized that fact. He hasn't sued the city, but probably could. The state's responsible for it because they run this water under their highway onto his property. I don't know how the county will get involved, but we, if we can approach them and get a cooperative spirit from them too. But it was outlined as a long-term project and the main thing was to keep it drained where we'd keep mosquitoes off of it and it wouldn't be a, a pond. And as the city had the availability of time and personnel to work on it and using available fill to put in there to, to fill the pond up, they would do that. We approached the state, the Department of Public, uh, Texas Department of Transportation. They offered to provide some concrete cans to put the drainage thing underneath there. It has to be re-engineered, but what the city manager outlined was well and good. He failed to tell you that, you know, we, we planned it for a three-year project. This is not a short-term project because we knew we didn't have the money in the budget. I think a big step has been made to get Mr. Halton to agree to this to where we can keep a mosquito problem abated and eventually relieve the problem. Yes, it's on private property, but we're having to create the problem, the city is and the state. So I think rightfully we, we should be doing it.
If, if I could also point out that, uh, it's not normal that the city would go on private property and do any kind of drainage work. I mean, one of, one of the reasons why we're having to do it is, is because, uh, like Mr. Hurley mentioned, the water that, that we're, we would address through the underground storm drain, uh, is not water running off of Mr. Halton's property. It's water coming from all, that whole region that runs down the highway that ultimately either the city or Text Dot is, is responsible for, not Mr. Halton. He, he's the guy that just had the water directed on to his property. But the other part of this is missed, uh, in order to do this project, to put an underground storm sewer there, you have to have easements, uh, fairly wide easement, uh, across his property. Mr. Halton is agreeing to actually grant us these easements for, for free. We're, you know, not all easements come that way. Sometimes we have to actually pay for, for the use of, of property. Mr. Halton, in return for this, he's contributing the easements to, to the project. So, uh, it, it does seem a little bit lopsided on, on the surface. I, I recognize that and not very comfortable with having to, to come up with a hundred and thousand or more, uh, for materials, but, um, it's a problem that's been there for twenty, twenty-five years. I, I don't even know really how long and, and here's an opportunity to, to get it resolved and, and that's what we're proposing and it is costing us some money unfortunately.
Let me say this, I don't think the city proposed to, to lay out this much money for the first year. In fact, there wasn't any intention for any cost related to this as, in this budget year. Over a period of time, we assume that the economy's going to improve and also that we're going to get cooperation from Text Dot and the county. So hopefully, like Mr. Torres says, we won't have to spend anything except our labor and that's what we're looking at.
And maybe the county's labor and not ours.
But this, this should be a three-year project instead of a one. And why the figures are put in there, that's just to let people know what it would cost if we had to buy it.
Okay, Councilmember Williams has his light on. I think we've discussed this, uh, pretty thoroughly and when he is finished with, uh, with what he has to say or to ask, uh, I'm ready to receive a motion.
I, uh, wasn't aware it was on a three-year, uh, project, Mr. Hurley. I apologize for that, but, uh, I guess my question to the city manager or code enforcement, whoever it needs to be, is the tall grass, uh, the brush, all that, is that on a three-year project too or is that something we? You know, we got Sausser Drive fixed. Uh, people up there, every time it rained, their socks got soggy. Uh, it does cost half a million dollars to fix it and I think we fixed it a whole lot cheaper than, than, uh, what was estimated. Uh, I don't have a problem if it's one year, two year, or three year as far as the water, uh, finally doing away with the water. I do have a problem with the brush that's around at the, uh, the, uh, growth out over the highway, out in the highway department's easement. Uh, I've requested for that to be cut away. Uh, Mr. Slovac, when he was here, I brought his attention one time and three days later they come out there and they cut all the brush, but they cut it four foot high and everything come back, all the trees come back as shrubs. Uh, that is, that is why I'm getting the calls about being unsightly far, you know? That's a beautiful home place and with just a little bit of maintenance, that, that front being cleaned up, it could still be even more beautiful. But I have a problem going out and writing citizens' tickets, mailing them letters for tall grass and for, uh, violations on their property when we sit there and we don't do anything with this because it's going to cost a lot of money to fix it. You know, we're, we're ignoring one problem because the other problem is going to cost a lot of money.
I, I really believe that, uh, this whole pond, whatever, however, however you want to refer to it, can be filled in before next growing season and assuming it is filled in over the winter months, uh, then maintaining it will, will be very easy for Mr. Halton to do, to, to mow it and plant grass or whatever it is he wants to do. That won't be our responsibility to, to mow it or to plant grass or whatever he decides just to fill it in, but filling it in and clearing all that underbrush will make all the, the difference in the world on, on appearance on the highway.
I think the clearing of the underbrush and all that needs to be done now. I don't think it needs to be done after the growing season. Uh, if you come out and give me a ticket for tall grass on my property and I tell you that I'm going to take care of that next year after the growing season starts, I, I don't think I'd get away with it. I get, I may be arguing a, a point that's not worth arguing.
Well, I, I just think the underbrush will be cleared out as we bring the fill in there. It's hard to get in there and clear it out now, w- w- you know, being swampy like it is, but once we start dumping dirt in there and able to get, uh, equipment in there, that, that undergrowth will come out very easily.
We cleared it off during the dry season, during the drought and it got nearly dry in there and, and the brush and stuff sitting there. And I still feel complaints from up in the Diamond Oaks area. I, I have people over in Mr. Lewis's area that call me on it. I have people far as, uh, South Halton City. Uh, every time something comes up, uh, I get someone, you know, calling, complaining about one of their code violations they have and they ask me, "Well, how come I can't do this and they can do that up there?" And I guess I've got the question, same, same question for y'all. Why, how can we write violations and tickets to people when we got something out there on a major US highway that everybody can see and we ignore that, but we're going to do it later when we fill it in with dirt?
Okay, we've discussed this item and we're, uh, and I'm not suggesting Councilmember Williams just did, but we've been repeating ourselves a little bit and that always an indication. We've, uh, discussed this far enough. I'm ready now for a motion, uh, on item number six. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution, uh, two zero zero three dash zero five six dash oh one.
We have a motion to approve, uh, this, uh, item number six, uh, as presented, uh, in our documentation. Do I have a second to that motion? Okay, I don't have a second. I'll ask one more time and, uh, if there's no second forthcoming, uh, I'll declare that motion dead for lack of a second and we'll proceed from there. Do I have a second? Okay, Councilmember Fowler?
I have a question for Mr. Hurley if he make an amendment to his motion that nothing-
If he'd make an amendment to his motion that nothing be spent other than for the clearing and for the drainage to be maintained through there, but no funding be spent on any improvements as far as materials, other than the cost of the labor and at this time and until it comes back before the council?
That's my understanding. At the, all of the planning meetings that we had with Mr. Haltem and Mr. Torres and Greg, the engineer, it was a kind of a labor situation, and it wasn't intended that he expected us to put any money out, and it wasn't discussed that way. The way I understood it, it was strictly labor.
I would second your motion if you would state it that way to where there's nothing spent other than the labor and our...
I amend my motion to include that this fiscal year that nothing but labor and equipment will be used.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion that Councilmember Hurley has corrected or amended his motion or restated his motion? Everybody understand it? Okay, Councilmember Fowler, and then Councilmember Sutton. Was that for a second?
I was in line for a second to the amended motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Councilmember Sutton?
I just had a question. Could this motion involve something with TexDOT funds too? So I noticed that the majority, well, of the cost here, the hundred and nine thousand, hundred and sixteen thousand was in the concrete boxes. And what I'd like to say is if TexDOT funding comes through, then go ahead and do that. But if it doesn't come through, we're not going to impact our budget or get in, or lower fund balances in the city to do this.
No, there's no impact this year's budget.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
Unless it came back for city council approval, obviously, right.
Mr. Torres, would you restate your understanding, or will you state your understanding of the motion that has been made and seconded that we're just about ready to vote on?
Okay, the way I understand it, Mayor and council, is that if this item is approved tonight, that there will not be any expenditure of any materials on this project without prior city council approval.
Is Mr. Torres...
Correct.
Everybody? All right, Councilmember Fowler?
One more question, does that work to begin immediately?
Yes. As a matter of fact, David had some dirt, they're cleaning out a creek right now, and they had some fill to go in there. Mr. Haltem, last week, I guess, indicated that he was ready to allow the dirt to come in there, but not until the city signed the signature. So yes, we are ready. We have the material to send there, and he appears to be ready as well. So it could begin as early as later this week, I guess, or next week.
What about the remainder of the code violations?
Remainder?
I mean, are we going to get in and get started on this thing and then stay on it until it's cleaned up? Or is this going to be, I mean, like some of the street projects we've had where we get on them and...
Well, keep in mind, this is a long-term project. We'll divert any clean fill that we have over the course of time. We'll divert anything we have there because actually that may be a shorter haul for us than having to take it way on the south end of town where a lot of our clean fill goes now. So it will actually help us in some ways by having a short distance to dispose of this. We're also going to talk to any of the contractors doing work for us. Mr. Haltem also has an opportunity to deal with anybody he sees fit, any kind of deal he can strike where they may bring in clean fill. All of this is going to be diverted. Will it take a month? Will it take six months? We don't really know. But most certainly, it's going to take some time to fill it in. It just depends on the availability of the dirt and, of course, weather conditions getting in and out of there.
But I understand on the cleanup though, I mean, I'm going to have difficulty when people come to me with code violations, and I have a gentleman here, Mr. Drake, that's taken time to come tonight about drainage areas along Little Fossil Creek and stuff eighteen-foot tall. It's been that way for years. Are we going to leave? What I'm saying is, are we going to get in on it, and we're going to start it, and we're going to finish it, or are we going to drag it out? And then everyone else that has a code violation, do they have the opportunity to come before the council and say, "Well, I'll get it done in six months"?
Right. Well, I mean, our intention is to get in there. As soon as you, it's hard to put equipment in there now and clear out that underbrush unless we have clean fill to bring it up and to give us a good base to move our equipment in. So as we're able to push dirt in there, we'll be able to clear out that underbrush. I think you'll see the underbrush start to go as fast as that dirt goes in there. David, tell me if you think I'm wrong in any way.
That's correct. It'll be a twofold process. We have to clear and fill at the same time. We can't get to the site itself without clearing, and it will be a timely process over a period of months because we have to get enough dirt to begin the proper fill. I think also, just to bring to your attention, there will be a cost, a minimal cost for some temporary access, a culvert, just a can to provide access to the property on the 377 side, you know, very minimal cost that we can identify on our operating budget.
Isn't that something we already have in-house?
We have, we do have a culvert. We had to buy some end caps, and then, of course, we had to put some base material so we can have a driving surface onto the property itself.
And that's part of this agreement also.
That'll be a very minimal cost through our operating budget.
Do we not have fill material on our stockpiles on the south end of town?
Yes, we do have some fill material that we already can bring on two sides.
So we could expedite the project then if we're not waiting on? We could take what fill we could and then go ahead, the rest of it, bring from the stockpiles from the south?
That's correct. We do have contractors in town that will provide us some fill also.
So you're still saying six months or who knows?
Six, eight months, minimal. And it's hard to really say because we haven't done any calculations on how much fill we actually do need, you know? Best-case scenario, hopefully we can do it minimal time period, but in the worst case, I'd hate to commit to a time, but obviously we will fill as we get enough material.
I think you'll see steady progress, and this may be an item that we need to include on our monthly capital projects just to keep you apprised monthly of the progress out there. And, of course, it'll be very visible just driving up and down 377, so.
Anything further, Councilmember Fowler?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Williams, and then I'm going to call for the vote.
Okay, I'll be very brief. I just want to go on record that I'm going to be voting against this. I'm totally against doing anything toward this property until the code violations are taken care of. Once the code violations are taken care of, then I don't have a problem. I don't care how we expedite or how fast we move the dirt or how fast we clear out that. We're taking care of code violations that we don't need to be taking care of, and I'll be voting against it.
Okay, I'll call for the vote at this time. Everybody clear on the motion? If you will register your vote, I will display it, and that passes with one no vote. We're ready now to move to what I had mentioned early. I know we have a large crowd here tonight, and thank you for coming. I wish we had at every council meeting a full house, and we appreciate those who are watching on HCTV. And I think most of you who are here tonight are here regarding a couple of items. One, regarding the elimination or the vacation of some of the positions, the incentive pay and other related personnel issues, as well as deliberation regarding the performance of the city manager. And what we're doing at this point, we will interject those two items to be addressed at this point. Now, I have before me statements by both the city manager and by all of the people who would be impacted by the action being proposed regarding the elimination of certain positions. This is posted to be addressed in executive session. However, these individuals wish to exercise their right to have these items discussed in open session. Now, I believe our city attorney has a comment to make before we proceed with discussing anything in open session regarding these two items. So, Mr. Olson, if you will, tell us about this item and how it works and how we'll proceed from here.
Mayor, because these items are being taken out of order, I had intended to address the council in executive session about both of these items on a couple of legal issues that I need to bring to the attention of the council. And I would recommend that we go into executive session prior to discussing these in public so that I can convey my legal advice on those issues to you. Any deliberation that you're going to take on these matters regarding the personnel issues themselves needs to take place in public after the executive session, but I do want to cover some legal issues with you first under section 551.071, Mayor.
Okay, what we will do then at this time, the council will move to closed session, and the only purpose for that is to ask the attorney legal questions. No further discussion can be made. We don't anticipate this will take a long time, but you may want to get up and stretch a little bit. But immediately following the questions and answers on legal issues regarding both of these items, we will return to this position, and all discussion relating to both of these items will take place at that time. So the council is moving at this time into closed session under provision 551.071. attorney as allowed by the Texas government code that I cited before we went in. And we're ready now to address, first of all, the issue regarding the, under section 551.074, deliberation regarding vacation of positions, incentive pay, and other related personnel issues. You remember I mentioned before we went into executive session that the individuals involved had exercised their right to have this discussed in open session as we're gathered here tonight? All of the conversation that occurred while we were out in executive session was questions for the attorney regarding legal aspects of this issue and the other one that we'll address in just a moment. I might take just a moment to introduce what we're doing tonight. During the budget workshops, intense discussion occurred because of revenue shortfall. There were a number of positions that we were not able to fund because of that, and during the course of that discussion, we talked about secretary positions, purchasing agent, senior accountant, assistant city engineer, those types of positions. And at that time, during the budget sessions and debate, we decided to keep them and we funded those, and they were included in the budget and in the tax rate that was approved. When we did approve the budget and the tax rate, we did include these positions that I just mentioned a moment ago. And then a couple of weeks later, at the next budget session, we identified five positions that the council gave staff direction to take a look at in order to cut or unfund those positions. And that was two secretaries, a purchasing agent, assistant city manager, and the senior So that gives you a little bit of an idea how we got... That is correct. If I said assistant city manager, that was not correct. Tom, where are you? Ah, okay. Thank you for calling that to my attention. So that explains how we got to this point tonight, and we'll begin the discussion at this point. I think Councilmember Fowler, you're the one that had made the motion last time. You want to lead out with the discussion. And then we will, do we have any citizens who wish to speak on this particular subject? Okay, we do not have. This item, there are... Okay. What we're going to be doing at this point, and it may seem a little confusing, but there is some method in this process. What we're doing here is simply having some discussion on that. The action item regarding this is action item number 12. So at action item number 12, anyone who had filled out a card who wished to speak on this subject will be given an opportunity at item number 12. But at this point, following our consulting with the city attorney in closed session, we're ready now for a discussion of the issues that are involved. And Councilmember Fowler, if you will, lead out on this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came before the council last meeting. We had discussed, as Mayor had previously mentioned, about we're faced with a very tough budget this year. It's very, very difficult. We came in last year, we overbudgeted $1.1 million. That's part of the reason we're in this problem. We're 1.1 million less than what we had anticipated. That was the budget that we were given. It didn't come through for various reasons. It's not all the staff's fault, but I have to lay some blame there. And we were, we've come up at that meeting and then we're faced with a senior citizens' election that they had on freezing the taxes, which passed by, we were informed, some eighty-some-odd percent here in Haltem City. Well, you look at that and they say, "Well, that's next year," but that's another $50,000. We come to the meeting tonight, it's the 13th day of the budget year, and our number, I guess, sixth item is a $65,000 budget overrun. Our seventh item is another $119,000 budget overrun. You know, I have to look at a way to try to do some things to save for all the citizens. I don't like, I don't like the idea of having to have people bump around or move around or do anything else. But when I was elected, I was sworn to office to try to do the best I could to make sure that the financial status of this city is maintained and maintained properly. And we're not always, we're not always put up here to do the most popular decisions in the world. It's nothing that I like. It's hard coming before people, staff that works hard, employees that work hard, asking them to move around. But if that's what I feel like is necessary to do, I'm one vote. And I ask those individuals to do what they can to, in an effort to make this, either combine resources in different areas or do whatever we need to do to make this thing work for the entire city, not just for one small group of people or two or three individuals. It's about the whole. It's the sum of the whole, and that's what I had to look at. And, you know, already tonight, we're facing, if you just add those two together, not counting the labor, you're looking at almost $200,000 in budget overruns, and it's the 13th day of the fiscal year. So in order to do that, we have to be physically responsible up here. It's not something we like. It's not something we want to do, but we have to. Therefore, I'll leave it at that, Mayor. That's why I made the motion, and that's why I think it's something we seriously need to look at.
Okay, Councilmember Williams, and then Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to vacate the engineers' position.
If we could, Councilmember Williams...
We can go ahead and make a motion.
We're not on item number 12 yet.
Okay.
The motion is not in order till we get to item number 12.
I'm just trying to speed things along.
The purpose right now is for discussion. That normally would have taken place back in closed session had these employees not...
Go ahead, mention my mother. Yeah, they got a gun. Come on in. Y'all give him a hand when he gets in. Get him a bad good seat.
Kevin, yours be found.
Okay, Councilmember Williams, I think you were ready to make a motion.
Councilmember Williams, I think you were ready to make a motion. We're not ready till we get to item number 12 regarding this.
I reserve that, right.
Okay. The council, at this point, is in the process of just having the discussion out in the front that we normally would have had back in closed session, had it not been waived by the individuals who are involved. Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just a point of order, a point of information, I'm not sure which, but many times and whenever we bring these agenda items up, we give the public a chance to talk, even though they haven't filled out a speaker card. I've heard you say in times past that anyone wishing to speak for this issue or speak against, I would respectfully ask you to open this up for those that would want to speak on this issue here, since it is such a sensitive issue, as Councilman Fowler has said. Secondly, while you're considering that, I just want to make an opening statement that I disagree very much with Councilman Fowler, that we do not have a balanced budget. We do have a balanced budget, we approved it. The budget is in place right now. It funds, it fully funds everything. It doesn't leave the fund levels in our city at the place that we wanted them to be, but nevertheless, it does provide for that. We do have a functioning budget in place. One of the things that Councilman Fowler mentioned is we have additional expenses coming up, like number nine on the agenda today, where we've talked about Hole and Pond. I'm sorry, yeah. It was not number nine, it was number six, correct. We did not incur any additional funds with that, whenever we approved that. If you'll remember the motion, we did not allow for any additional funds to be used for the services. So I believe that we're padding what we're saying in terms of the budget, whenever we say that we're in a budget crisis. We are not in a budget crisis. We do not need to cut positions at this time to meet any perceived or real budget crisis, because frankly, we don't have a budget crisis in this city. We are now fully funded, and things are happening in the city as they should right now. So I just wanted to make that opening statement, and I'd like to reserve that there are some other issues that need to be brought out, but I reserve them to a later time in this discussion.
Councilmember Sutton, you asked for a point of order, and I've given that some thought due to my failure to mention before we went into executive session because we had taken this item out of order. And we did that because of discretion on my part to do so. And my failure to mention that the people in the audience who wish to address this issue would have an opportunity, that they'd need to fill out one of the speakers' request forms, and the fact that I failed to do that, we will allow, at this time, if anyone wishes to speak on this from the audience, now, we're not ready for that to happen yet, but if you'll go back and get one of these yellow sheets and fill it out, and hand it to someone on the end, we will address it. And also, the same thing with regard to the city manager issue that will be coming up in a moment. So, if you haven't filled out one of these and you wish to do so, you need to do that now and get those up here ASAP. Councilmember Branson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I just go ahead and jump into this? I mean, do we have to wait, or can we just go ahead and jump right into it with comments and that sort of thing?
We're ready for your comments.
Okay. I would like to address all three positions actually that have been proposed. One of the positions that's proposed for elimination is actually a position in the city that saves us money. They work with the cooperative purchasing area, where they work with other cities and other municipalities to get us better prices on office supplies, and I even imagine that it goes to the furniture that will be going into some of the new buildings. This is a specialized position. I don't know that it's something that, I'm sure it's something department heads could learn, I'm sure it's not something, though, that they should be doing every day. This is specialized. It's someone that takes... You need to know how to do it, and I feel certain that this job more than pays for itself and the savings that it generates each year in coming back to the city by actually... Uh-oh. Oh, I thought April was gonna scold me. Okay. But I do believe that this job saves the city money, and I think that it more than pays for itself and then some. So, I'll go on record now saying that I am not for eliminating that position, and I don't think it's something that our department heads or other individuals within the city need to be dealing with on a daily basis. It needs to be someone that's familiar with how the processing and bidding process works. As far as the administrative positions, I think both of those positions are vital to whatever department they are in. They know the workings of that department. Each one of those departments also have specialized functions. I don't see the common sense in moving them somewhere else to learn a job that someone else already knows. I'm just not convinced that the cost savings are there. And I guess with that, I'll let my vote say the rest of it.
Okay. Any further discussion by members of the council on this? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna make a motion a while ago, and I checked with the attorney, April, and found out the reason I couldn't make the motion. But if I could probably give the ideal of my motion, it could probably save us an hour or two. So I don't know when would that be out of order to tell you what my motion may be.
As long as it pertains to this topic of discussion, go ahead.
We're talking about the engineer, we're talking about the head accountant, two admin secretaries, and the purchasing agent, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, when we get down to the part we're gonna make the motion, I will make a motion to leave everybody in there with the exception of the engineer and the other one. So that's what I was trying to save all the time on.
You can discuss that now if you'd like.
Okay. What I was gonna do is, I'm gonna propose to the council that since the engineer's position and that the head accountant's position are both vacant and would not cause a problem with the employees or would not cause anybody their job, to go ahead and not fund those at this time, but go ahead and fund the two admin secretaries and fund the purchasing That's what my motion will be when it comes time.
Okay, but at this point, since we're only commenting, that's your comment at the moment.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments from the council, any other discussion on this item? Okay, I think it's appropriate that, by the way, was there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak on this subject before we proceed on to the next? Okay, I understand by that no one? We're on... We're on...
Executive session discussion.
We're on the executive session items regarding the vacation of...
If he wants to speak, he wants to be...
He wants to speak on item 12.
Ask him, does he want to speak on it now?
Okay. Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I think it appropriate, while we're waiting for these other two to come in who wish to speak on vacation of these positions, that the people in the audience and the people... Okay, this one. Okay. Okay, that's on the other one, right. I think it's important for the citizens to know what the mayor's position is, even though I may not get to vote, probably won't with an odd number of council members here. I'm not comfortable with the process. I have no problem with us taking a hard look at staffing and at personnel and making cuts if we have to. We did that during the budget process. I don't like to do that, but to look out for the health and welfare of the organization, sometime you have to do that. What I am concerned about is the action by the council in identifying specific areas to be eliminated. It's my understanding and the training I've had regarding the city manager form of government, the council hires a city manager, they cast a vision for the city, they set the policy, they ask the tough questions, they approve the budget, they evaluate performance in holding the city manager accountable, and then they let the city manager manage the city on a day-to-day basis and do not get involved with hands-on management and micromanage the city. I think a far better approach would be for the council to just simply say to the city manager, "We believe we need to find another $200,000 or $250,000. You find that and you bring it back to us." I think for the council to identify specific positions to be eliminated, we get into the area of micromanagement, and we violate what I think is the integrity of the city manager form of government. As a result of that, because I'm opposed to how we got to where we are, I am not in favor of any action to eliminate these positions or not to fund them. I'd like for the city manager to go out and find a way to make this happen without the city council individually getting in there and saying, "You do this, and you do that," and like has been done. But that's just my position, just my thought, and other elected officials have their points of view, and we'll see how this works out. First of all, on the vacation of positions, Betty Corica... Okay. Betty, if you will, come forward at this time. You have an opportunity to address the council on this, or if you prefer to wait till we get ready to take action on item number 12 now?
Yeah, I'm already up. I don't want to do this twice.
If you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Betty Corica. My address is 1725 Brookhaven.
Will you get closer to the microphone, please?
Okay, my name's Betty Corica, and my address is 1725 Brookhaven, Bedford, Texas. I'm not a Holtham City resident, but I do work for the city, and I have for two years. I am speaking for six people that are involved in this, so I'm not speaking alone. I appreciate everything that you all said. I love John's motion that he's maybe making. Our question was, before all this happened, and it's pretty much what the mayor is saying, is we were wondering about the criteria that we should use to select these positions. And that may be a mute point at this point, if you're going to make a different motion, but that was something that we were wondering about and would like to know more about in the event that you discuss this more detail.
Thank you, Ms. Corica. The next speaker's request form, Lisa Cloud. Ms. Cloud, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address for the record. I believe you want to speak on this subject.
Hi, my name's Lisa Cloud, 7204 Oldham, and I recently, y'all voted against me to have my position eliminated in the last budget. So that, I just wanted to point out. I'm a little nervous here. The effects that y'all don't take into consideration, not only was my position in the last budget eliminated, but these five positions y'all are talking about now were not in that previous budget. And the budget was pronounced, and everybody voted for it, and it was passed, and now we aren't, like you said, we're not under a budget crisis at this time. I would like for y'all to reconsider these positions y'all are talking about at this time and consider the morale of the city, what it's in right now. It's really bad. I've been here almost six years. Got eliminated, my position was eliminated, I was downsized, still coming to work every day, doing my job, but it affected my job, my city, my department, as well as the whole city, and I hope y'all are taking that into consideration with these votes. There's money out there to get it somewhere. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Larson, you had filled out a speaker's request form. Would you like to address that at this time, or you want to wait till 12? If you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Gary Larson. I live at 4509 Cripple Creek Road in Holtham City. I agree with you, Mayor, and I'm a little concerned with the process here. It is highly unusual for an elected body to get this specific in to eliminate this and eliminate that, especially after they went through the entire budget process, you know, and approved the budget and thought the budget was a wonderful thing, and raised our taxes and raised our water bill to cover it. You know, and then all of a sudden, now we have to, you know, come back and make these cuts, and I'm just a little concerned about the process. I'm concerned that the two council members that brought it forward and seconded it, both have employees working for the city. Strangely enough, they're not touched, they're not affected, nor is Councilmember Fowler's father's department. Not a single job in his department was affected by this. It's a strange coincidence, and I just bring that up so that everybody would know that. The purchasing agent was a position, when I was mayor, that we couldn't afford, and I was so happy to see the city take that position, because I believe that it is vital. It keeps everybody honest, it keeps the best deal for the city, it takes that burden off the department heads. And the other question I've got is, we talk about eliminating the city engineer, who's going to perform that role? Are we gonna dump that on the assistant and not pay him any more money? Or is it just gonna go undone? It doesn't appear that a lot of forethought was put into this, and I would say that this is not a real well-conceived plan, and I would ask you to leave the budget as it is and leave these people in their role, because the only people that lose in this are the citizens, because the citizens will have less service, because there'll be less people here providing it. We operate on a shoestring as it is. Thank you, Mayor.
One of the questions I need to ask, just for clarity, from a comment that was just made, is it the city engineer position or the assistant city engineer position that we had, that we're talking about non-funding?
Engineer position.
Okay, the engineer. Okay. Mr. Ray Eklund is our next speaker. Mr. Eklund, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. In regards to the engineer's position, I'll have to say that the engineer seemed to serve us very well, and that position seemed to serve the city very well last year. I disagree with the logic that simply because there's not a person in that position at this time, that that would be appropriate to cut the position. I think what we need is those engineering kind of services. We come up here week after week to visit about planning issues and drainage issues and engineering issues time and time again. That man worked very hard for us last year, and I'm sure the assistant engineer is busy as well, and yet, we still had timeliness problems from time to time, and that they couldn't get everywhere they had to be to accomplish the things that we would like to have them do. So that looks like a position that the city certainly needs to... We had the drainage issues. It was very nice to be able to reach over and touch someone on city staff that understood well beyond maybe our understanding to help flow those issues through. If we eliminate that position, we'll end up having to hire those services out, okay? And certainly, that should cost us more than doing it in-house. So I think the idea of the engineer and the assistant engineer would be inappropriate and frankly, unproductive for us to get our things accomplished that we want to in the city, as far as drainage, and the south end of town, or the north end of town, are different areas, and I hope that you'll reconsider any action in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. And our final speaker on this, Mr. Jack Lewis, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address for the record, please. Okay. Thank you. Any further comment by members of the council? I know some have spoken, some have not, and what I want to do, again, is to depart a little bit from usual procedure, and I know we have action item 11 and speakers, visitors, citizens for them, but we'll go ahead and move action item number 12 here in just a moment. After we finish the discussion, we'll be ready to take action on this while it's fresh on everyone's mind. Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Larson, you're very adept and observant on the budget process. I know you went through it, and as a council member, as mayor, both, and, you know, we had six budget workshops, and I don't remember, and you may have been there, I just don't remember that you were, but we talk about taxes and we talk about things like that, and the first comment you made was you raised our taxes and you did this, but yet, you're cutting our services. I think we also had a meeting in here with, we were proposing cutting $20... I think we had also had a meeting in here with, we were proposing cutting 27 employees due to the fact we were $1.1 million in the hole earlier this year. Were you at that meeting by chance?
Go ahead with your comments.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No comments from the audience, please.
It's easy for, it's easy for people to sit out there unless you take the time to come to these meetings and see the difficult situation we're put in. We have employees that we have to take care of and do the best we can, and it's very difficult to do that without finding funding sources, you know? And we can raise your taxes, we can continue to raise them out the roof. You know, we're still 27th of 34 cities, I believe, of the lowest taxing entities in Tarrant County, but yet every time we do something, if you raise the taxes or you raise the water rates, we squawk about that. But then if we cut services, then we squawk about that. I would highly recommend for everyone, it's not an easy deal, but you're more than welcome to have your input through our budget processes or anything else, if you'll just take the time to come up there and do it, and then you can be well-informed on what we're speaking about. But yes, we did raise the taxes just to cover the cost to maintain what we have, and that was simply to maintain what we have. We still have fund balances that are lower than what our bond ratings need to be, where they need to be. So yes, it was a difficult situation, and hopefully we've tried to do the best we can. And as we're faced with these things throughout the year, these budget overruns, we have to find funding for them, and that's what we've tried to do, or that's what I've tried to do. Now, maybe it's not the best way. I'm not saying that it is. But if someone can come and put some input, or takes the time to come and put input in and explain things and explain a different or an ulterior way to do it, I'm more than happy to listen to anyone. Just take the time to come up here and do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Branson and other members of the council who haven't spoken, if you wish to do so, I would encourage you to turn your light on pretty quick because we're going to move on to action item number 12 if, after Councilmember Branson speaks.
I just had a question for Councilmember Williams. When he was going to make his motion, are you making the motion to just leave those frozen unfunded for now, and then if things improve, look at filling those positions?
I have got a motion over here. I know that the item had came up about the assistant engineer and the engineer.
No, isn't it the engineer and the assistant accounting?
It's a head accountant and the engineer. But at that time, when I bring that up, I'll have a question for the city manager as to whether we have adequate engineers or how many we have at that time. I'll fully explain it at that time.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thanks.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Any further comment in this section? Okay, there being none, we move now to action item number 12, and that is to consider and or take action regarding approval of the ordinance that's listed here, providing for a reduction in force by vacating certain positions. And our human resources director, Ms. Joni Damarra, if you will, introduce this subject for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In an effort to realize additional cost savings, the city council instructed staff to cut five additional positions and bring the necessary ordinance to tonight's council meeting. The five positions identified were city engineer, senior accountant, purchasing agent, and two administrative secretary two positions. This agenda item represents a necessary ordinance required under section 1121 of the charter to vacate the three positions. Those positions are the purchasing agent and the two administrative secretary two positions. Additional positions in the city will be affected by this action because of civil service demotion rights as set out in section 1121. The Civil Service Commission met on October the 9th, 2003, to consider the revised salary classification plan that incorporated these cuts. The plan was rejected by a vote of 2 to 1, 2 to 0, excuse me, with one commissioner absent. Estimated cost savings from the total of the five cuts will vary from approximately $227,000 to $239,000, depending upon how the effective employees actually exercise their rights. The two vacancies alone account for approximately $132,000, or roughly 55% to 58% of the total cost savings. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Marra, one thing that this council's tried to do, and we've looked at in the meter-reading department, some different areas, and we've always, regardless of what it appears, we've always made an effort to try to find positions within the city for people to move laterally. If something's vacated, then we try to place them in another area within the city, and that was the intent of this. Are there positions available, assuming the bumping, if this passed and the bumping began, would there be positions available within the city for these other employees to, whoever may be bumped or may not, to fill?
The positions available right now are the public works maintenance worker, which is a highly physical position, and the people that are looking at being bumped would not be probably physically able to do it. So that has been looked at.
But that's the only position within the city that needs to be filled?
I think that's the only one that we actually have posted right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Williams.
I've got a question for you, Ms. Marra. How many employees have we laid off in the last 60 days due to this?
Actually, with the second reading of the salary classification plan that y'all read tonight, for the 25 cuts that we approved during the budget, it resulted in only one. The rest, people left through attrition.
On this one person that's being cut?
For those.
Due to the second reading tonight?
Yes, sir.
Was he notified in plenty of time before?
Actually, he was not because we had some interpretation issues on civil service rights.
Okay. I'd asked for every employee that was going to be even a chance to be laid off to be notified.
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, he was notified, but there was some confusion, but the end result was positive for him, I guess. He opted to bump, to exercise his bumping rights, and as a result, we're going to lose an employee.
Right, we're going to lose the lowest graded person.
Yeah. There was some bumping, three bumps, two or three bumps as a result of that.
Do we not have any positions vacant?
We do, but again, he has chosen, because of his salary range and his personal financial condition, not to accept the open public works positions.
Would have been an extreme cut in pay for him to have, the low guy there to have actually jumped over and accepted one of those maintenance positions.
I did meet with him, and that was discussed with him, what was open.
Okay.
What are the positions that are open?
The director of finance, of course, is open.
Well, can you do that?
Public works maintenance? Is that one or two of yours, David?
We have a dispatcher that's open, and I believe that's the only ones that we do have open at present.
About the recreation department?
Those have not been posted, sir.
Have they been budgeted?
They have been budgeted, and I've talked to Mr. Fowler. We were waiting to be closer to the opening of the rec center before he wanted those posted.
Yeah, there's that one position.
What position is this that's going to be open in the recreation department?
The recreation assistant one is the position that would be posted.
On what level of scale is this going to be comparison to?
It would be the lowest level. It would be a 52, so it would be equal to a public works maintenance worker. It would not have the physicality involved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the layout that you did here. This is really good. It helped to see at a glance what was going on, and you have two scenarios in here, as I noticed. This is kind of a general question. I noticed that the bumping takes place in a cascading type format. Did you look at the, there was some questions made about the morale of the city, and I was wondering, did you look at the qualifications of the people that were being pushed down to a lower level, and did they meet the qualifications of that position they were being bumped to? And in other words, would they be able to start from day one doing that position in a functional manner or not?
All of these.
In all cases.
All of these positions here, that would be the case. They would have regular learning curve, but as far as qualifications, by job description, that would not be an issue.
So there's a differentiation between qualifications and whether they can actually do the job to the level that it was being done by the person that was in there before?
Most definitely, because in some of the cases, we've had people their years doing the job.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions for Ms. Marra? Councilmember Fowler.
Yes, one last time for clarity. Joni, you said there's a dispatcher, there's recreation positions, there's what else? Public works maintenance positions?
Yes, sir. The recreation assistant, though, has not been posted yet. We were waiting to post that until closer to completion to the rec center.
And when do you anticipate that to be?
Whenever Mr. Fowler is ready to get that posted.
Another month or so. Yeah.
Okay, so if this did pass the way it was, would we have a home for the employees that were bumped, or would we not?
We.
Through your bumping scenario, would we have a comparable job for them to do?
Because of the individuals that would be bumped, no. Because the individuals that I know that would be bumped would not be able to perform the physical nature of, someone would have to go to that public works job, and I don't think any of them would be able to do that.
So one would have to go to public works job?
And still, we're talking in terms of, I'd have to look at pay. That's assuming someone would go to rec center and someone would go dispatch. Dispatch, we talked about, it's fairly high-stress, and I talked to several of them about it, and there wasn't an interest there, I'll be honest with you.
Not every, I mean, there's just some positions that are so specialized, you just can't put just anybody and everybody in them.
So yes, the position was open, but there wasn't, very little interest, to be honest.
But it would be an opportunity that they could, they're just.
And that's the way I presented it to them. I wanted them to know that by all means, we wanted them to stay with the city, certainly TMRS, you know, they've got their longevity there, you know, it would be an advantage to them just to stay, you know, for the short term, if nothing else.
So we do have things that just wouldn't necessarily be what that they would want to, the positions that they would want to fill?
Yes, sir.
Primarily the public works position, other than that, the other ones would be more clerical type positions?
Yes, sir.
Is that what would be, end up being bumped, would be clerical positions?
We would have a library clerk, we would have a public works communicator, and we would either have a purchasing agent or a secretary, depending on how those people would actually exercise their rights.
Okay.
All of those people, though, would be, they are office.
But there would be jobs for them? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Sutton?
Yeah, just a clarification. If jobs were available for them, then these scenarios are not accurate in that we would actually not realize those cost savings. Is that correct?
Well, the actual job openings right now are budgeted in other departments. What you have been given is a scenario by the demotion chain. So the savings would be realized here. This is the end of the bumping or demotion chain as it's outlined. They would then have to be, they would have to apply and be offered the jobs that we're talking about in other departments, because those are not part of the chain.
So the net result may be that there would be no cost savings at all if everyone was able to relocate to another job at a similar salary, for instance?
It could be, depending on the higher level, if we actually took them over at a maxed level, where we wouldn't have brought them in, perhaps at entry, if we were hiring brand-new, perhaps.
I see. So in other words, it's a little bit ambiguous to what our real cost savings are in this motion. Is that correct?
If they were actually taking other jobs with the city, yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
So what would be the minimum, then, you could save? If that scenario, we were given a scenario, and one's saying 233 and one's saying 239, so then those numbers are incorrect, or?
No, this is the savings, again.
What we're doing is you're saying you're taking a position that's already budgeted, and you're putting someone in, instead of hiring another one, you're still eliminating five separate positions, so you're going to have a cost savings of those five positions, which is $200,000 and some odd thousand dollars.
And these numbers are those numbers that we've presented to you.
Okay, so then those are correct.
Yes. The numbers where they would be moving to, those positions are budgeted fully in other departments. What I'm saying is I'm not sure what that number is budgeted at in those departments, depending on where those people would move to.
But it wouldn't vary more than, it wouldn't go below $200,000 on that end?
Probably not, because they would be maxed by the range. I mean, I could certainly do an analysis. I don't have that.
No, just don't take the time for that. Thank you, though.
Okay, any further questions for Ms. Marra? Thank you, Ms. Marra. I am now ready for a motion regarding item number 12. Councilmember Williams?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments before I make my motion, though.
Okay.
In response to the former mayor Gary Larson's comments about the perfect budget, I think I got to work with you on one budget. This is my sixth budget. I haven't found the perfect budget yet. This is a budget that I voted against. You said that we all voted for it. I voted against the budget I thought was a bit top-heavy, and so I don't believe it was a perfect budget, and everybody up here did not vote for it. Saying that, I believe that what we're looking at here, Ms. Branson had asked about the engineer's position. When I came on in 1998, we had one engineer, Greg Van Newenhuis. Mr. City Manager, could you give me a breakdown on how many engineers we have today?
Well, I was hoping to get an opportunity to explain that a little bit, because there's obviously some confusion in the room, and I think I'd like everybody to be very clear in what's happening with our engineering department. At the beginning of this year, we had three engineer positions, plus an EIT, which is engineering training. It's typically a young individual right out of school who's working toward it, and then two other, actually, I think we had three inspectors, okay? What our staff recommendation was going into this budget cycle was that we would eliminate one of those three engineering positions. And we did it in the interest of budget cutbacks. We knew we had to give up something within this operation, so we recommended that one of those positions be eliminated with the expectation that we'd be able to hold on to two, because there's truly enough work and activity going on here in this area to justify having two engineers. That would be the city engineer and the assistant city engineer. So the position that we were discussing earlier, where the bumping came into play, that was the third engineer position. That was the civil engineer is what the title. So then, when the recommendation came to hold off on funding the city engineer position, that was going to leave us with just one, quite frankly, putting us in a bind, because presently, right now, we only have one of the three positions filled. We have the assistant city engineer in that position, and the other, one, the city engineer position is vacant, and we're trying to figure out what we're going to do with it, and then the third position, the civil engineer position, is the person who has bumped down to the EIT. The EIT bumped down one of the inspectors. So we need two engineering positions. We have a lot of activity going on here, and we need that expertise in hand. I hate the thought of only operating with only one. It's a major concern on my part, and I, you know, it's ultimately the council's decision to make, how y'all see it. But if you're looking for my recommendation, we need to keep that city engineer position filled and maintain two, two people, two positions. We have far too much activity. If one of those individuals, if we only have one, you know, there are times when the individual might be off, might be sick, vacation, we would have no one here, and that's a problem. It's a major problem, and I'd like to see it corrected tonight.
Thank you.
Are you ready for?
Yes, sir.
Were you going to give a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would like at this time make a motion that we vacate the head accountant position at this time. I'd also like to make a motion that we put a 90-day freeze on the engineer and have the staff evaluate exactly what we need as far as engineers and make sure that we got what we need. Our former engineer, I've spoke with him, he's willing to be a consultant for us at a very reasonable rate. He even offered to do it for free, and I told him we wouldn't take that price, but I would like to make sure that these positions are filled and that we do get the proper people in there and the proper type engineering. As far as. As far as the, uh, uh, purchasing agent and the two admin secretaries, uh, within my motion, I'd like to also motion that we do fund those for the next coming year. So that will be funding a purchasing agent and the two admin secretaries that were in question. Be putting a freeze on the, uh, engineer for 90 days for study and, uh, not funding the head accountant at this time.
Okay, if I might restate that motion, Councilmember Williams, uh, for clarity, maybe for my benefit more than for anyone else, did I understand, uh, you, uh, your motion was to vacate the senior accountant position, to freeze the city engineer position for 30 days to allow staff to be able to, uh, to research that and come back to us with, with their findings? Uh, and then to go ahead and fund those two administrative secretary, two positions and the purchasing agent?
Did you say 30 days? I said 90 days.
90 days, okay.
90 days.
Other than, uh-
In one explanation on the, the head accountant, uh, we're down to one accountant right now. Our finance director's, uh, position is open and, uh, the reason I would like to keep that vacated until we hire a finance director and see where we're gonna be sitting in that department. So that's the reason I would not wanna, uh, fund that position right now.
Okay, council, uh, that's your motion. Councilmember Branson, I'm looking for a second.
Well, I might second it if I can clarify. I'm sorry.
It'll never get clear.
Well, no, I think, I think we can work this out, John, believe it or not. On the senior accountant, when you say vacate, you don't mean take the funding away? Are you kinda talking about a freeze until the director-
We're talking about not funding it at this time.
Okay, but you're leaving it in the-
And let me ask the attorney something. If we do not fund something at this time, later on in the year, we can refund it. Am I right or wrong?
I just wanna be sure that we don't have to go back through something with Jonita. I mean, like where it can just be out there so that when the time is right, it can be filled.
Ms. Mara, you look like you wanna say something.
Or maybe my almost second didn't make sense, I don't know.
And also, Wayne, I might ask you, this action item was actually a reduction in force for just those three positions? So I might ask for clarity here because it was not actually addressing the non-funding of those two others.
That's correct, but I think you need to address, for Councilmember Williams, or Councilmember Branson, uh, the issue of whether or not, uh, you need a freeze to be put on the senior accountant position or, uh, if it's unfunded, is that gonna cause the city grief if later on in the budget year, you want to fund that position?
It doesn't matter to me if you freeze or unfund it, um, as long as it's not abolished, it's on the classification plan.
Do not want it, do not want to do away with it, just do not want to fund it at this time.
Exactly. And as long as you're not abolishing it, it still exists as a slot and we'll just deal with getting money back to it whenever y'all desire.
I'm more interested in the finance director at this time. Am I gonna get the whole staff up here?
Just about. If you choose not to fund it, then when you do, if you do choose to fill it later on, you're gonna have to do a budget amendment to provide the funds to fund it. And you're gonna have to do a posting and ads and the whole nine yards to, to reestablish the funding for that position.
But if we freeze it?
If you freeze it, if you just choose not to hire it and leave the funding there, then you can, it's just that action of, of freezing it. You don't need to do a budget amendment for that.
Freeze it until further notice then.
Okay. John, I'll second it if you'll change it to freeze.
You want me to restate that?
Yes, if you would, restate your motion, please.
We're going to, uh, freeze the engineer's position for 90 days until staff can, uh, bring us back recommendations on how we're gonna restructure that. For the head accountant, we're gonna freeze that accountant for right now. Freeze the position.
The senior accountant?
Senior accountant. Until further notice. And then we're going to fund the, uh, purchasing agent and fund the two admin secretaries that were originally, uh, meant to be taken off.
Okay, well, then there is a second.
Okay, you have the second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Hurley and then Councilmember Sutton?
Well, I was gonna ask for clarification on his motion, but I think he explained it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yeah, I, I think the motion's good. My question is, is this, this looks like we're gonna have a real net dollar savings from this, from these two positions that is identifiable, about 139,000 if I'm correct. Are we gonna allow these funds to just accrue into the general fund and not allocate them at this time? But just allow these savings to accrue to the general fund? And that's a question for John and maybe the city manager, too.
Who's answering that question?
Council Contingency Fund, would that be all right? That doesn't mean our money, we don't get it.
Right, I mean, it, it could cap, be captured in that line item, the savings from, from these three. We're talking about a full year of the senior accountant and we're talking about maybe 90 days of, of the city engineer to be decided later, obviously. But whatever that is, and we're probably talking, uh, 50,000 or close, close to that amount, can be captured within that contingency fund.
When they get the finance director-
No, no, that's wrong. That's wrong because the savings from the city engineer is found within the water and sewer fund. Different fund. But the savings from the senior accountant position is within the general fund. So whatever that is, Jonita, senior accountant, what, 40, 45?
40.
Yeah.
And even in the water and sewer fund, you're probably looking at being vacant for five months if we're, if it's gonna be 90 days. So you're looking at five months worth of savings out of a salary that's-
Yeah.
Plus benefits of about 90,000 dollars.
But we can, either way, we can place the savings from either one of those positions and place them in a contingency, non-departmental, uh, line item in each of those respective funds.
Do that, yeah.
Councilmember Fowler, uh, and then Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I've got a question of Councilman Williams. If you would amend that to take out the 90-day freeze on the engineer's position and just unfund that and the senior accountant?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, wait a minute.
No.
You're gonna have to go through the same process if you bring them back on board anyway to amend the budget. So it doesn't make a whole lot of difference whether you say 90 days or the whole year.
Explain that to Diane over there.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, everybody, timeout, just a minute. Councilmember Hurley, will you repeat what you just said so everybody's sure we understand it?
I would second his motion if he amended it to include not funding the engineer and the senior accountant for the full year.
We already have the motion-
You'll have to go back through the same procedure to amend the budget if you decide to fund it, so why just go 90 days?
We already have that motion seconded.
We've, we froze the senior-
I asked him if he would amend his motion.
And he's asked if you will amend the motion?
I think he said yes.
You need to separate those two down there.
She's confusing the issue.
I wanna be able to hire either one of those positions at any time if we need to, but I wanna keep the, the engineers froze.
If the council decides to fill the position of an engineer, at any time during the year, they can bring it back up, put it on the agenda, if they can figure out the funding for it and refund it by amending the budget, the same way we're gonna do now.
I believe he said no, he would not accept that.
Gonsler? Wayne?
Okay, I'm gonna let Mr. Muir take the stab at this. What I understood Mr. Muir to say is that if we do that, Councilmember Hurley, it will require a budget amendment, that will require 30 days' notice, public hearing, uh, go through the process. If you wanna proceed that way, that's acceptable. The, the motion that's on the floor now and that has been seconded is to freeze the funding of these two positions. And the purpose of doing that is so that, uh, at any point in time, the council wants to bring this back up for reconsideration, you can do that without going through the budget amendment.
Should we have an emergency, then we'll be able to go ahead and go ahead with it.
Withdraw the 90-days freeze on the engineer's position.
You want me to withdraw the 90-days freeze? Just put it on freeze then. Will you amend that, Ms. Branson?
I will resecond.
Okay, since you withdrew something, tell us, give us the motion again.
I make a motion.
You've already made the motion, we just need you to restate the motion, uh, with this-
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, proceed.
We're going to freeze a position of the senior accountant. We're gonna freeze a position of the engineer. And on that position is where staff can go back and reevaluate and see what we actually need in that department. We're going to fund this finance dr- or the, uh, purchasing agent and we're gonna fund the two admin secretaries. And I'm gonna go get a drink of water when we get through with this.
Maybe we won't have to restate that motion and you're cool with the second. Councilmember Fowler, your light was on a moment ago. Councilmember Sutton, and then I'm gonna call-
Just a point of information, or maybe an order. Since those positions, those three positions are already funded, do we have to have a motion to fund them again, since they're already funded? Can't the motion just include the unfunding?
I, I think the motion as it stands is acceptable, um, just for clarification. The ordinance on the agenda, the effect of this motion, if you vote on it, is to take no action on the ordinance on the agenda. The positions are currently funded, they will stay funded.
Okay.
But I think the motion as, as it is worded is, is acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, discussion now complete on the motion. I'm ready for you to cast your vote, please, and, uh, if you'll register your vote, I will display it. Okay. Uh, let me ask, I know a number of you are here, uh, we're here for that particular item. We're getting ready now to move to the city manager issue. You're certainly welcome to stay. If you need to go, we, we can take just a second if some of you do need to go. Okay? Okay, we come, uh, now to the next item on the agenda and that is, uh, to deliberate regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, uh, or dismissal of the city manager. I think I have a responsibility as the chair of this meeting to, uh, to introduce this and to kind of explain a little bit about how we got to where we are. What precipitated this item being placed on the agenda? We have had, or there has been, an ongoing disagreement between the city manager and Councilmember Fowler. And that's accelerated in the last couple of days and it, uh, really has reached an impasse. And, uh, what is at issue is a contract called an escrow agreement. And I have a copy here and you can get a copy if you're interested in that from the city secretary. Between, uh, a company that Councilmember Fowler was one of the partners in and the city dated October 5th, 2001. And in that contract, Councilmember Fowler put 50,000 dollars in escrow guaranteeing that he would do six specific things that are identified in that document. And the escrow money was to be released, uh, back to Councilmember Fowler when each of those agreed items had been completed. Councilmember Fowler has asked for the remaining 25,000 dollars, uh, to, to be released. And City Manager Torres, uh, has said in the last few days that he can't do that because of the terms of the contract. And I'll just simply read, uh, uh, read a portion of that contract on page four. "The city is not authorized to release any of the escrow funds to North Texas Land Development unless and until the items listed above have been completed and the city has issued written notice as to such items in accordance with, uh, with the above schedule." So, uh, Mr. Torres has been caught with that language, uh, in the contract and Councilmember Fowler, uh, has been interested in, uh, in retrieving the 25,000 dollars of money that he has placed in escrow. Mr. Torres had sent, uh, a memo to the council, making the council aware of this confrontation, the conflict, and to what extent it had accelerated, and asked for the council help. It was, uh, in response to that, that Councilmember Fowler placed an item on the agenda under executive session for deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of, uh, uh, of the city manager. Normally, this item would be discussed in executive session behind closed doors, but, uh, City Manager Torres has exercised his right to have it, have that discussion occur here in open session. And that's what we're doing, uh, here, uh, at, at the moment. And how we'll proceed from here, uh, since Councilmember Fowler placed this item on the agenda, I will give him an opportunity to, uh, to lead off this discussion. And then any comments by Mr. Torres and then, uh, by the council. And then we do have a number of, uh, speakers' request forms filled out that we will, uh, that we will honor before any action is taken regarding this item. So Councilmember Fowler?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for you, though. First of all, where did you receive all your information from? Because you haven't even spoken to me regarding this item.
And the reason I haven't spoken to you, I am very, uh, very cautious and very conscious of, uh, of violating anything regarding the open meetings, uh, record. What I'm doing is simply taking the information I have from documents, uh, public record documents.
Public record documents, could you, uh, first of all, I'm a bit confused. I guess I didn't choose to air all our dirty laundry out here in the middle of the public, but if we want to, that's, that's not a problem. That's not a problem with me, uh. Part, part of the, uh-
It's come to order.
Part of the thing on Legend Point is I voluntarily had the 25,000 dollars. Year, a year and a half ago, that project was finished. And all I've asked for is a letter that releases me from any part of Legend Point. The city took the escrow money and that was fine.
Okay.
I've asked the city manager on numerous occasions, as a businessperson, all I'm asking for is my release of lien or, uh, my release letter that indemnifies me from the project. That's all I've asked for. Either do that or give me the money and let me, when I have citizens like Mr. Drake that come up here and ask why Legend Point is being maintained and all right now and his channel's not, what, what am I gonna tell the guy? He thinks that it's my responsibility, it's not. I no longer have an interest in Legend Point and all I've asked for is a letter from the city manager on numerous occasions that, that says, hey, you're no longer a part of this. We've taken your money and you're no longer a part of it. I was under the assumption that the city council directed the manager to do that over a year ago. And it's never been done yet and that's all I've asked for. Now, what was, it was distorted in the newspaper completely. So that's what's the, the item at hand, that's all I've asked for the entire time. I've said, hey, take the money. I've told you that on numerous occasions. Take the money, I don't care, I'm not worried about that. All I'm asking for is to be released from the project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Torres, any comment you'd like to make at this point or, uh, would you like for us to go to members of the council?
I, I have no comment to make, Mayor. I, I think everybody here understands the issue and it's very clear, you know, there's nothing I can add to it, so.
I wasn't looking a moment ago when the lights came on. I've called on Councilmember Williams a number of times tonight and I'll call on Councilmember Avery at first and then Councilmember Williams.
Uh, Mayor, when we're ready for a motion, I, I'm in line to make a motion.
Okay, we may not be ready yet, but when we are, Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Fowler stated, uh, I, I read the article, uh, late Saturday night that he's referring to that was in the newspaper. I got some calls, uh, earlier in the day concerning it. Went out of town early Saturday morning, but I got a phone call from a former council member, and a former mayor pro temp. And, uh, he'd asked me about the, uh, agreement that we were talking about. The, the newspaper had a, uh, made note of him. I told him, well, I hadn't read the, the article real close and, and so, uh, he kinda briefly ran through the article and, uh, the gentleman was Philip Jennings, which is a former mayor pro temp, city councilman here. And he recalls that, uh, at an executive session that this council, uh, before they were, uh, replaced in office, had made a motion to take Legend Point and, uh, take Mr. Fowler's money and, uh, take over responsibility of it. On the, uh, way down to the ballgame, I, Dewey Markham was riding with me and I asked Dewey Markham and Dewey Markham confirmed it. I, I, I thought we'd done it, but when I seen you come- I thought we'd done it, but when I seen it come out in the paper, I thought, well, maybe we hadn't done it. So, according to two of our colleagues that used to sit up here with us, they claimed that this item had already been addressed in executive session. We had agreed to keep Mr. Fowler's money and take over the, that it should be responsible for it. Now, I don't know if, I asked the city secretary this morning, as she recalled, and we don't record executive sessions, so there's no way to go back to the executive session to get the recordings on that. But I'd hope now that any of the other councilmembers says they remember that, or if my memory's failing me, or if it's correct or not.
Councilmember Williams, I would, of course, prefer that we not discuss in public items that were talked about in executive session, but one thing I can tell you is, if the item did come up in executive session, there would have been no motion or vote by the council, and any motion or vote would have taken place in public. So, unless there's something in the minutes, there would not have been a formal vote of the city council on that.
Anything further, councilmember Williams? Any other comment on this issue? Okay, there being none, I'm ready now for a motion, and councilmember Avery had indicated a moment ago he was prepared to make, wait a minute, wait, wait, before we do, I have a number of speaker's request cards, so hold that motion for just a moment. The first of these is Mr. Jimmy Grazan. Mr. Grazan, if you'll come to the speaker's stand, please, and give us your name and address for the record, and you wish to speak on this item, the position of the city manager.
My name's Jim Grazan, 2821 Eleanor, Fort Worth, Texas. I'm kind of familiar with Mr. Fowler's project down there, and the city's position, and what's happened, and what comes to mind is several things. We had some people that were called down by the Ethics Commission in Austin, Texas, and fined $1,000 that they had to come up with. I believe there was eight of them involved in that little situation. I personally think that there was a little bit of misinterpretation there, but by my figures, that come up with about $100 and 1/4 apiece. But I was in the courtroom the other day, and I saw a little lady that was wearing a lab jacket, works over here in a nursing home, gets fined several hundred dollars for having tall weeds. Let's see, no, it wasn't tall weeds, she forgot to mow the grass, I think, something like that.
Mr. Grazan, excuse me just a moment, are you speaking on the city manager? Is that where you're headed with your comments?
I believe that's kind of where I'm headed.
Okay.
Because we've had several city managers, and basically, the attitude of the city manager's office reflects down, and his attitude is based on, basically, the people he works for, which is the city council. I noted that, I made a comment to our assistant city manager the other day, that coming down northeast 28th Street off of 35, if you're not familiar with Fort Worth, Texas, and Haldum City, it's a way to come into town, a lot of people use it going to the airport. About Beach Street, you're rolling 40 miles an hour, the speed limit's 40, you can roll 45, 47, you cross into Haldum City, and it drops to 35. Most policemen won't write a ticket for five, seven miles over the speed limit, but now, you know, you're 10 to 12 miles over the speed limit, so they write a ticket. Is that a speed trap? Hmm. If you get a ticket, I think you probably think it is. Those of us that know it's there, no problem. But through other managers before this manager, things like that have occurred, and no one's really complained or done anything about it, so it does leave a little bit of a stigma about your city. Secondly, you come into City Hall, Dallas, Texas was on the news a couple of years ago because they wanted to get people to come into their city, they wanted to be user-friendly. But you come into City Hall here in Haldum City, and we've got some of the rudest attitudes amongst a few people of any place I've ever been. Thirdly, or I mean, final, you had a man come up here out of South Central Texas, you brought him into a hornet's nest, you put him in there, and you said, hey, now, don't hurt none of our hornets, don't fire none of them, god darn, don't hurt them, but if they sting you, you know, you can wipe them off, but be kind of gentle there, Richard, don't hurt nobody. And I wonder just what in the world y'all really expect this man to do? I just, that's my whole point of view right here. It's all right for him to be the city manager of a city that charges some poor gal that's working in a nursing home hundreds of dollars when they get fined $100 and 1/4 for ethics violation. And I think that probably what's in order here is to tell the man you're gonna stand behind him, or let him go on and get him a decent job somewhere.[996.32][996.32](Laughter/Applause).
Our next speaker, Mr. Jack Lewis. Mr. Lewis, if you will, give us your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Jack Lewis, I live at 4600 Savel. Of course, I don't know what the motion's going to be, but from what I'm hearing, and they use the word "micromanage," and of course, we've been down here, and I think it's unprecedented that the council will get involved in open session on personnel. You mentioned budget sessions, and you use the word "senior citizen" on trying to pass the buck or blame, and there's been several times from this council, reference to the senior citizens who are to blame, even use the word "welfare." The senior citizens in the economic situation we're talking about, that the people in this city passed by a 92% vote, it is not their fault of all of this. Now, I don't know what you're going to do about the personnel here, this is an open meeting, and we appreciate you having it here.
Well, I am about that.
But if I understand recently, the city manager, excuse me, what did I do wrong?
Oh, not anything yet, I'm just asking you, you asked to speak on the city manager, and like Mr. Grazan, you're heading that way?
Yeah, again, it's sort of like, who's that guy on, Mr. Matt Locke, you gotta build your case. The case is, this council, this council, the way I understand it, I've been to some of the meeting councils, and I did go down to the budget session, that's what we hired this fellow for, and y'all gave him a raise and gave him a good report, if I remember. And now I'm hearing from this memo, the paper, you can't blame the paper, but if you've got problems with, here we are, 13 days into the budget, we've been discussing budget all night, two items on the consent agenda, but I believe most of this stuff, I assume y'all already have discussed in either closed or open meetings. And now, if the city manager, who evidently has done a good job, now, he's had a job to come into here, as was mentioned, and it is hard, but we seem like we've had enough, we've had businesses left to city, we're having a lot of residences up for sale, we've had a finance director left, we've discussed all this funding and cascading, we're confused on what you are going to do, because all of you seem to be confused. Now, I hope, if we don't have a finance director, our police chief left a while back, we've got a gubern, I understand, and this fellow here was a gubern up till a few months ago, and now we've got a problem, so I hope they will stand, as Mr. Grazan said, behind this man, and stand behind this city, let's look at the issues, discuss them, work them out like y'all were elected to do, rather than come up here and stay till the wee hours of the morning for people who have to work to discuss and go into a closed meeting. It's unprecedented, so I would encourage y'all to do your homework and come up here and vote on it, and don't confuse us with your confusion.
Our final speaker on the issue of the city manager and his performance, Gary Larson. Mr. Larson, if you'll come forward, and please, again, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Gary Larson, I live at 4509 Cripple Creek Road. I think probably speaking tonight is probably a waste of time, we've got a councilmember who's already, before hearing any citizen speak, hearing any of his fellow councilmembers, he's ready to make a motion without hearing the facts. We seem to have a difference of opinion. Councilmember Fowler thinks, oh, I just, you know, wanted a little letter releasing me. Well, according to the contract, when he failed to live up to his terms, it says, "The city shall distribute any remaining escrow funds to the city, and the agreement shall terminate." He had his release. When the agreement terminated, he's released from it. What Mr. Torres says happened, I believe, is probably more to the point, because city managers don't come out and do this and lie. There's no purpose for it, they put their job in jeopardy, they put their family in jeopardy. They typically, when they get to this point, they're threatened with potentially illegal action by councilmembers. We have the city manager who, in his memo, said, "Councilmember Fowler demanded either I return his $25,000, or submit a letter to him in writing indicating why the city would not do this." That's a far cry from, "Give me a release." So, we have two different points of view. We have a councilmember who was sanctioned by this body, censured by this body, for ethics violations less than a year ago. We have the councilmember who's dying to make the motion, who, if memory serves correct, in May of 2002, voted that councilmember Fowler, because of this contract, was not able to serve as a councilmember. I'm not sure exactly what has changed in his mind over the time, but this is a travesty. You've got a city manager, I don't come to all the meetings, I do watch VHCTV, we spend a fortune on HGTV, you don't have to be here to participate, councilmember, and if there's something going on that's not on HGTV, maybe you ought to put it on HGTV. But the fact of the matter is, is we have an issue here of whether the city manager's lying, or a councilmember's lying. City manager's got no reason to lie about what's said, no reason whatsoever. You have every reason to lie, and have done it before. Thank you for your time.[1357.53][1357.53](Applause).
Councilmember Branson, and then when you're finished, we're ready for the motion.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions for Richard. I didn't come on till May, and without trying to violate executive session, but Richard, since May, I don't recall any conversations where you have been reprimanded by the council as a group. I mean, I don't know what goes on when you have meetings one-on-one with councilmembers, but I don't recall any reprimand of any kind, I recall your raise, and that sort of thing. I mean, without delving too deep, has the council reprimanded you, or given you any kind of indication that something's going on, or something's awry?
Not at all. Has not occurred, even during my evaluation in February, it was all positive. There were a few constructive criticism remarks that were made, and those were fair. I mean, I'm not a perfect person, I make mistakes, I slip on occasion, but by and large, it was a very fair evaluation, and I received, I believe, a 4.5% pay increase, similar to what other employees made.
And I know, if I can ask one or two more questions, and I know that you've been a city manager before, in other cities, when they have problems, and I know your friends-
For about 15 years, yes.
Okay, and you have a network of city managers that you talk with. Is the protocol generally that you talk with the city manager when you have issues with him, either one-on-one, or as a group, as a council?
I'll be honest with you, I've never been in a situation where I had a sitting council member who had a clear conflict of interest, and then to compound that, to try to apply pressure on me, to threaten my job. I've never experienced that before, and quite frankly, I hope I don't have to again. But, so, it's unprecedented in my career, I'm sure it's occurred in other places.
I just want to make a statement that I think the turmoil that this council has put the staff and the citizens at the past three weeks is unconscionable. I mean, I just can't even imagine why anybody would want to upset the employees and the members. I mean, it's incredible to me. In 30 years of the corporate world, where it's pretty much dog-eat-dog, I'm not quite sure I've ever seen anything like this, even among females.[1512.53][1512.53](Laughter/Applause).
Okay, councilmember Avery, we're ready for your motion.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. Due to the fact that I have lost all faith and confidence in Richard Torres' ability to lead this city in a manner which accomplishes the goals and objectives set by the city council, therefore, I make a motion that we, I make a motion that we offer a 30-day notice of termination of his employment contract with the city.
You may disagree, and that's your right to do so. My job, while you're disagreeing, is to maintain order and decorum, and if you will, I'd like to ask for your assistance to help me make my job easier in maintaining order and decorum. This is a difficult issue for everybody involved, and I understand what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, and I understand your feelings that you just demonstrated, but that's the motion before us, and councilmember Hurley, is this for a second?
That's for a second.
We have a motion and a second that you've just heard, do we have any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sutton?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that Richard has, I have lost no faith in Richard. In fact, Richard is the type of city manager that every city probably wishes they could have, and the actions of my fellow councilmen are unconscionable, they are unjustified, and they are flat-out wrong. But Richard is a great city manager. If five of these councilmen actually do vote to let him go, they will be letting go someone that is a fully qualified, capable city manager, and that Haldum City, and you, the citizens, will have lost an opportunity to have a great manager that I have experienced since the time I've been a councilman. I totally disagree, and he has not lost faith with me. If anything, I have grown in my trust, in my understanding, and my faith in this city
Councilmember Williams?
I probably was Mr. Torres' first friend when he came to Hawtham City, or one of them. I guess I was, I told him to get in his car and go back home, we wasn't gonna hire He did a tremendous job, he come in here like Mr. Lewis, I think, or whoever it was, he had a hornet's nest. He did have a hornet's nest, and he had a tough go. Been a lot of things surrounding him, and I still consider Richard a friend of mine, and wherever he goes, I'll consider him a friend of mine. I probably, probably won't be as high as on his list as I am on mine, but there's a time to move on, a time to stay. The employee's here, the morale's bad, you hear that? Y'all want to talk? See, I don't count-
Please, continue-
Put your hand down, I'll get to you later.
Councilmember Williams, continue your speech, and I'll take care of the crowd.
Appreciate it. You know, they say morale's bad, there's reason for morale to be bad. It could be the city manager, it could be me. I'll take the credit, you know, and go ahead and clap, I don't care, stand, give me a standing ovation. But I sit up here, I overheard Ms. Branson say a while ago, talking to Mr. Hurley about her telephone at work, he'd ask her if she had a Watts line, or a line that was not long-distance, she said she didn't. So, she probably doesn't get these calls, starting at 7:00 in the morning, going to 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, citizens complaining. I've got 250 employees I gotta please, and I've got 39,000 citizens I gotta please. And I pay part of them, I listen to the other part of them. Y'all elect us to do a job, we do the best job we can, we pick the best person we can. I can't really think of a decision that we've made- I can't really think of a decision that we've made in the last year that really anybody has liked. You know? You look out and you see the people that are clapping and applauding and raising their hands above their head, you know? I'm just, I'm to the point where I'm disappointed to sit up here every other week and try to help Halton City when I've got so many people working against us. And it's not only citizens, it's some of the employees. It's not all the employees, it's just a minute few. And, Richard, however my vote goes tonight, I'm going to tell you, it's going to be in your best interest. And, you know, I'm going to be doing... Somebody else wants to talk, Mayor?
Councilmember Branson?
Can I just clarify one of Mr. Williams' comments again? I may have a long-distance phone number to work, but I have a cellphone and a home number that I pick up messages on all day long, and I think if you talk to any of the city staff, you'll find out that they've had absolutely no problem getting ahold of me on a 817 area code any given day. And on Saturday, I had 28 citizens find me. So, yeah, my phone rings too.
Further comments before I call for the vote? As I've stated repeatedly tonight, I think it's important for the citizens of Halton City to know where their mayor stands, and I want to, I want to tell you, I'm ashamed and embarrassed by the motion and by the events that have led up to the motion being made, to the effect it has. When Mr. Torres, when we were interviewing for the city manager, I was the one out of the eight that did not select Mr. Torres. In my opinion, he did not interview as strongly as the other finalists. There was great excitement and overwhelming support for this man from the very beginning. His credentials, his experience, his integrity, his character. I had an opportunity to talk to some of the people where he had been, and I could understand why they were so reluctant for him to leave and why members of our council was so excited about Mr. Torres coming. The vote was unanimous, and I had no problem with Mr. Torres coming. I felt like the other candidate had interviewed much stronger in the final interview. However, since the time Mr. Torres has been here, I have had an opportunity to work closely with Mr. Torres and to be in contact with him on a pretty regular basis, and that goes with the territory of being the mayor. The mayor and the city manager have to have significant contact with each other. All during that time, that I have had contact with Mr. Torres for a year and a half, however long it's been that he's been here, I have found him to be a most capable city manager. The fact that we ended up with a 1.2 million shortfall last year had nothing to do with him or his management. It had to do with Kmart closing and Windexy and some of the other things that happened, but it had nothing whatsoever to do. So any aspersions that are cast on the management that Mr. Torres has performed in this city is baseless and is, in my opinion, I respectfully disagree with some of my council members in this regard, but it's a cheap shot, and it's not true. I can tell you, Richard Torres is an outstanding city manager, and he will go a long way wherever he goes, and I am disappointed greatly that he will not be able to continue for the next few years here in Halton City and help us make some progress if the motion that's currently on the floor prevails. I have spent time with Mr. Torres, and in all of that time, he never betrayed any conversation he had had with any other council member. He never talked about what another council member said or what they did. He never spoke in a disparaging way about them. He never betrayed any confidence that he had. His focus has been on doing what is right, a focus on doing what is legal, a focus on doing what is moral, and it is a travesty. Somebody used that word a moment ago. A travesty of decency and a travesty of justice if this man is terminated and if this motion that is currently before us does prevail. Mr. Torres, in addition to being an outstanding city manager, is a man of character and integrity. What got him in trouble? He's a spirited guy that can't be pushed around or threatened. A man of integrity that will stand up and lay his career on the line to do what is right. And from my perspective, that's what has happened here. He is focused on doing the right thing. He doesn't indulge in agendas, and that's got him in trouble. I would hope the council can give serious consideration and take the high road to councilmanship. And that says, if you're going to spend the time and the effort that we have to bring someone in, if you have a problem with them, and we're going to have problems, that's just part of human nature. But what's happening here tonight is a knee-jerk reaction. The high road to councilmanship is to help the city manager succeed and to help set in place a plan for improvement, and that hasn't happened. And it's unfortunate, and it's a great disappointment to me that when we did evaluate him, and that's been such a short time, and when we thought so much of him, we were willing to give him a four-and-a-half percent raise, the same as we'd given others just a few months before that, and we caught a lot of flack over doing that, that this council was excited and was behind him. But I want the citizens of Halton City to know that this action, that if the motion prevails that's before us tonight, is unconscionable, and the best interest of Halton City has not been served by the action that's being taken. That's the mayor's perspective. Others certainly have a right to their position. Any other comments on the motion before us? I want to remind everyone in the audience that by charter for the city manager to be terminated, we have to have five votes. So four votes won't do it, it takes five. So at this time, I'll call for the vote on the motion, and Councilmember Evert, you want to restate that motion just for clarity?
Sure, Mayor. Because I've lost all faith in the city manager's ability to lead this city in a manner which, how did I exactly state it earlier? I got it written down here. Here we go. Due to the fact that I've lost all faith and confidence in Richard Torres' ability to lead this city in a manner which accomplishes the goals and objectives set by the city council, therefore, make a motion that we put him on notice of a 30-day notice that will terminate his employment contract with the city.
Okay, you've heard the motion, and all the mayor's saying, there are other solutions. There are other solutions. If you will, gentlemen, if you'll display your vote in this regard, I will display We have five votes in favor of terminating the city manager to an opposition, the motion prevails. And with that, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Ladies and gentlemen, the council meeting is called back to order at this time. If everybody will come in and be seated, we'll proceed with the meeting. We have a number of items on the agenda yet to be addressed. It's a quarter of midnight. I'd like to ask what the pleasure of the council is. Would you like to continue this meeting next Monday night? You want to continue on tonight? The way we've been going, it may well be a good while, whatever the pleasure the council is regarding that. Councilmember Sutton, you had your light on?
Yeah, if I could recommend that we do reconvene with the appropriate 72-hour posting notice at a later time to finish the rest of the business that we were planning on doing tonight.
Councilmember Branson?
That's for a second.
I really wasn't asking for a motion at this point, I'm just asking for-
I have a comment then.
Okay. That's what I'm asking for, comments.
My comment is that I think this has been a highly stressful evening, and in fairness to the other agenda items, that maybe they could be addressed more appropriately at a later time, so after the appropriate posting, if the other council members agree.
Sure. Councilmember Williams?
I've got two items. One-
If we postpone this, excuse me, if we postpone this, I'd like to take and put in a one-hour work session on this item 16 for the council.
Is that the charter?
Take advantage of that.
Yeah.
What about the charter?
Councilmember Williams, if I understand correctly, the recent amendment says you're supposed to call your elections 62 days in advance. So basically, by your second meeting in November, you would need to call the charter election if you want to have it held in February.
My second question is, Mr. Mayor, on item number 17, there's a group of people here on that, and they've sat very patiently through this entire meeting. I would like to go ahead, it's going to be a very short agenda item, I would like to get that agenda item out of the way.
Okay. We can certainly accommodate anything like that. It's the pleasure of the council, whatever you wish, you know? I could stay here all night if that's what everybody wants to do, but-
Could I impose on the council, just do the item 17 to get it out of the way, because it's going to be a short item?
Okay. Are you in favor of continuing this next Monday night and maybe setting the workshop up that Councilmember Hurley set in connection with that regarding the charter?
Yeah, we're going to do 17, and that's it.
Well, it's your suggestion.
Yes, that's, I'm okay with that.
You could support that.
Mayor, I just noticed we've got a public hearing notice tonight for final plat. I don't know if we've got timing issues or-
Yeah, we need to do that.
-the notices have gone out. You may want to do the public hearing tonight on that.
Okay. Councilmember Fowler?
Well, Mr. Drake had taken the time to come also and speak on the creek issues.
Could we take his testimony, and if we carried it forward to next time? Councilmember Fowler?
Would you be able to come back, Mr. Drake?
It's pretty tough. I've been up quite a while now, but, you know, I don't, I suffer with MS and a few other diseases, and I never know from one day to the next how long I'm going to be.
And I want to apologize to you for this meeting just going on and on and us not being able to accommodate your being here to address that issue. Councilmember Fowler, would it be a possible solution that Mr. Drake have an opportunity to address the council tonight and have the city secretary transcribe that?
That would be suitable for me if it's okay with Mr. Drake. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Members of the council, am I hearing any opposition to continuing this next Monday night with these three items, going ahead and taking care of them? Mr. Drake, in deference to you, if you would, go ahead and come forward. Would you like us to-
No, it's fine.
Okay. We can move the microphone to your position.
No, it's fine.
Give us, if you don't mind, pull that mic down kind of in front of you so we can hear you, and if you would, give us your name and address for the record, and the city secretary will transcribe whatever you have to say.
My name's Terry Drake. I live at 3901 Jan. Row Court here in Halton City. I bought my home here in June of 1990. I live right on Little Fossil Creek, just off of Beach Street, and Dr. Gill's place on Broadway there is right behind my house. And the weeds have grown up in the creek so bad that they're 18 and 20-foot tall, and if you drive out on the beach, you can see them above the railing on the bridge, and really looks terrible. And what's even worse is there's rats. I'm talking two-foot-long rats. There's four-foot-long snakes that come into my yard. When the water's up, we get trash floating down through there. My yard is a little different than anybody else's, because my boys get down behind the fence and mow down next to the creek. I'm the only one that does. If you drive down Broadway or Beach Street, you can see my home. You can't see anybody else's down through there. But since 1990, your city crews has cleaned the creek bed out one time, and that was either '96 or '97. It's the only time the creek has been cleaned. Your crews come down in there with bulldozers and front-end loaders, and they hogged the dirt away, and it looked good. I mean, Little Fossil Creek's solid bedrock. What's there washes down. Doesn't take very long at all to clean it out, and it would make some good dirt to throw out there in that pond y'all want to fill. It'd be a way to get rid of it. Now, right now, I've got a beaver problem, and I was told by your animal control people that you don't fund them enough that they can catch the beaver. So Dr. Gill's father come out to my house, and he caught a beaver. The man's over 90 years old, and he's expected to grow up and down the banks and catch these beavers. The man fell down over my creek, busted the side of his face up. He's 90-plus years old. This is who your people told me to call. This is wrong. There is a dam down below my place, about a quarter of a mile. If you go down Broadway, there is a steel company down there, and there's a RV place where you can park RVs. I killed a copperhead in my front yard this summer. There's no excuse for that in city limits. Now they're building new development up on Beach Street that's going to be an industrial area just up across Broadway. All that water's got to go somewhere. Guess where it's going to go? It's going to go in Little Fossil Creek. And all that's going to be blacktopped and asphalted up there. And all that extra water's going to be coming down into Little Fossil Creek every time it rains, which is going to make it even worse. I think you need to clean the creek. You do it down below, like where he was talking about. That area looks nice compared to what I had to put up with. I shouldn't have had to put up with it. Nobody else should have put up with snakes and rats. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake, for taking time. And I know it was inconvenient for you. And I could tell, not only by the sacrifice you made to be here because of your health, but also the passion with which you spoke, that this is a very important issue to you. And the city secretary will transcribe your comments and will include that next Monday in our, in our packet next Monday when, when this is addressed further. So thank you for your contribution to, to this item.
I also called the city manager and public works about the mosquito problem because I can't afford to have a western Nile bite.
Yeah.
It would kill me, and there's a little boy just up the street from me that's in about the same shape as I am. He can't afford it.
Yeah.
And mosquitoes are terrible.
Well, thank you very much for, for your comment. Mr. Eklund, you had filled out a card. Would you like to wait till next Monday night to...
I'm sorry.
Okay. Also, because some of you had filled out cards, let me have all of those. And let me be sure, is some of those on seventeen? Yeah, these are, and we're...
Speaker's phone.
Okay, the speakers. Mr. Moore and Mr. Jackson, would y'all be interested in coming back next Monday and delivering the message you have?
Considering the fact that I have regards to my proceedings, would you like to deliver that this week?
I didn't.
If I'm speaking, I would.
Okay. Okay. Since, if anybody feels compelled to do this tonight, you're certainly welcome to. So, Mr. Jackson? And I know we're kind of jumping around. We're trying to accommodate several different things here. This one is on conflict of interest and ethics. This has to do, this would be a visitor citizens forum.
Yes, sir.
So let's all remember the parameters connected with that. You're aware that no action can be taken. Council cannot enter the discussion. This has not been posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. So whatever your comments are, we can't respond to. So you have five minutes.
Thank you. Did I need to state my name?
State your name and address for the record.
Evan Jackson, five thousand eight, Nadine. I wanted to speak tonight about conflicts of interest and also about some ethics things. I've recently had the pleasure of reading about our city in both of our local newspapers several times in recent weeks. And I'd like to focus on a few things that are particularly offensive. First of all, the ongoing ethics problem that some current and ex-council members, among others, are fighting. We've spent thousands of dollars defending these people, and it appears that we may spend even more money going after the consulting firm Pavlik and Associates in order to recoup these expenditures. I'm afraid that this may be a gamble at best, and I hope that it's not done unless our legal counsel is extremely certain it would be a safe bet. And most of all, I'm concerned that this was just not accept, was just accepted, paid, and why don't we move on? The Ethics Commission said, you know, that there would be no guilt, and it was just a thousand dollars. As somebody's already mentioned, that's what, a hundred twenty-five apiece? Anyway. Second, I'm concerned about our tax on our city manager. And as you've seen, this is disgusting. He's been enduring attacks from a certain member of the council, and he's done an outstanding and professional job. And he's had, he's done an outstanding job running the city and dealing with the games that you people put him through. I am ashamed of your decision, and I'm disappointed that council members with conflicts of interest were allowed to vote. I understand that there's some circumstances, but I don't think it's right. I'm also concerned that the recent elections that we've had the past two were not enough to bring about the change that's needed. Efforts were made by people in the community in the last two elections to clean up this city. Those efforts were partially successful. I'd like to urge new candidates to rise up and clean this city. This is not right. We deserve better.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Okay. And pardon me if I'm a little bit lost here. We had two more items we were going to address. One is the public hearing. Let's, let's do that now. Item number eleven, if you would, on the agenda, is a public hearing regarding a final plat and then a corresponding motion to accept that plat. And instead of Mr. Pliska being here tonight, our city engineer, Mr. Warren, Mr. Bennett Howell, not Warren Howell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This is a public hearing in action on P dash zero one five dash zero three. It's a public hearing on the application of Juan Cisneros and Emelda Angeles for the final plat of lots one, two, and three, Block One, Cisangels Edition, being a replat of lots seven and eight, and lots F and G, Block Two, Original Town of Birdville Edition, located on the northwest corner of Broadway Avenue and Rogers Street, containing approximately zero point five seven seven acres of land located in the six thousand block of Broadway and the thirty-three hundred block of Rogers. Consideration and/or action regarding the final plat of lots one, two, and three, Block One, Cisangels Edition, being a replat of lots seven and eight, lots F and G, Block Two, Original Town of Birdville Edition, located on the northwest corner of Broadway and Rogers, containing approximately zero point five seven seven acres of land located in the six thousand block of Broadway and the thirty-three hundred block of Rogers. The applicant is final plating this property in order to construct residential structures on two newly created lots and to bring the remaining lot into compliance with the city's subdivision ordinance requirements. The applicant is, is going to pay into the sidewalk fund for all three lots and pay into the parkland dedication in the amount of five hundred dollars for the new, two newly created residential lots. The third lot already has an existing structure, and that's why he's not paying into the parkland dedication fund for that particular lot. At the meeting on September twenty-third, the P and Z Commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat, P dash zero one five dash zero three, to the city council because the plat meets the minimum requirements for city subdivision ordinance. Any questions?
Members of the council, any questions for Mr. Howell regarding this item? Councilmember Branson, and then Councilmember Williams?
I don't have any questions. I'm in line for a motion, and I want to urge everyone to go by and look at what's happening in this place.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and I will need to invite members of the audience if they need to speak for or against, against that. Councilmember Williams, any questions for Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Howell?
Mr. Engineer? The sidewalks, he's placing the money in the...
Sidewalk fund.
Why are we not requiring sidewalks on Broadway Avenue?
The, as I understand it, they have the option of paying into the fund instead of installing sidewalks.
We have a sidewalk ordinance, and I guess what I don't understand is we have sidewalk ordinance, and nobody ever puts a sidewalk in. We'll never have sidewalks.
Only thing I can tell you is you pass the sidewalk fund ordinance to allow people to pay into this fund instead of installing sidewalks.
So in other words, on that ordinance, they don't have to come before anybody to, to get a variance for that?
I'm not aware of anything.
Tom, can you help here?
You're looking at me, and it's too late for me to even recall.
Is it too late for that question?
Yeah, it's too late for that question. I know we just revisited the issue, and I think that the concern was that everybody was coming before the council for a variance, and the ordinance was amended to allow the construction of sidewalks or the payment of a fee in lieu of construction. But don't hold me to that, Councilmember Williams. It's late.
Okay, I just...
Is that a deal breaker for you?
No, not really. I just, you know, I've had some people approach me about the, the problem with sidewalks and the, just like Mr. Drake that just left. Those are three pieces of property that he wouldn't be able to cross if he was going to go down the street in his wheelchair. And, yeah, I think there's places like, like down the southern part in the industrial area where we've waived sidewalks, where there's going to be basically driveways, you know, parking lots and stuff. But sometime, we're going to start getting sidewalks, or, you know, we're not going to be able to get these people mobile, you know, especially with American Disabilities Act and the wheelchairs.
Only thing I can respond there is you'll have to repeal the sidewalk fund ordinance you just passed.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you.
I remember it being passed, but if I could have the, maybe the city secretary look that back up and see if that was... I remember voting on that to where if, but it was my understanding that if a sidewalk, if we deemed that a sidewalk did need to be there, that they could opt to put that in the fund. I could have misunderstood that.
Do you want her to look that up tonight?
No, it's at a later time.
Okay, so it's not a deal breaker as far as any action?
No, sir, but it's something we need to look at, you know, if...
Right.
You know...
Thank you, Mr. Howell. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against this, this replat. I'll ask Mr. Cisneros or Ms. Angeles or either of the two of you here. Okay, I believe they're not. No one has indicated they'd like to speak either for or against. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move now to, to action regarding this. And Councilmember Branson, you were trying to make a motion a moment ago. Are you ready to...
Oh, I was. I was trying to hurry things along. I apologize. Now I would like to make the motion that we accept P zero one five zero three.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, for a second.
Councilmember Sutton?
Same, second.
Just one comment before we display the vote on that. If you're familiar with this part of Broadway, this is a tremendous improvement that is being planned up there. Just east of Carson, on the north side of the road, somebody went in on that duplex and really did it up, and they're still working on it. And that's a great improvement, and these two new homes that are coming in up there would be a great, great addition in an area that's been an eyesore. So this is a good thing. If you'll register your votes. Okay, we come to item seventeen, I think, is the final one we wanted to take a look at tonight. And Councilmember Williams, you want to introduce that since you placed it on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about code enforcement earlier in the night and different variations of different code ordinances. And in the past couple of weeks, I've had some phone calls from people down the south end of Haltum City that had, I don't think they've actually been cited yet, but I think they've been written the letters concerning parking on grass. I know that we have an ordinance that prohibits parking on grass, and I think it's a good ordinance, you know, in its place. I don't think that the, you know, parking in the front lawn is pleasing to the eye to your neighbors. You know, it might not bother you, but your neighbors, you know, may, may not have bought their house to watch you parking your grass. Code tells me sometimes that behind the houses, if they're behind the fence, they're sort of out of sight and out of mind. So if you got a fence, you can pretty well do whatever you want to. I've got some people here tonight that probably are going to speak that have larger tracts of land. They're, they're larger than just a regular block house or a postage-stamped top house. And they have a barn back behind their, their house quite a ways back. And by that barn, they keep a stock trailer. Well, according to our ordinance, they'll have to pave that. And I don't think that, I think they've got drainage problems down that area already as there is without putting more concrete on the ground. And I was wanting to open this up and let a couple of residents share their concerns on it and possibly send it to P and Z and let them maybe relook at it and look at a possibly no parking in the grass from the back of the building line on your home to the front of the street out there. So if we could, Mayor, if you've got some...
Okay.
Or if any other council member may want to comment before we do that.
We have three speakers request forms filled out. The first, Randy Rust. Mr. Rust, if you would, come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's been a stressful night, and I sure appreciate y'all hearing this, this particular item because I will be out of town next week, so I do appreciate it. My name's Randy Rust. I do reside at fifty-twenty-one Gate Street in Haltum City, and I've lived at this location since nineteen seventy-four. At this location, we have three acres. And as do many people in South Haltum City, there's a lot of larger tracts in South Haltum City. There's a lot of horse people in South Haltum City. So much so, it even justifies a full-time feed store, you know, and Ruth Hart Feed, and he just, he just, matter of fact, bought a new place. He was renting, and now he bought. Like I say, in South Haltum City, it's a little different. It's older. People have lived there for years. There's a whole lot of people parking on not improved parking. You can go down Parish Road, and I venture to say, you probably will not find two concrete driveways in a six or eight-block area. Anyway, the reason I'm here on September tenth, we did receive a notice that we were in violation of this, of a city ordinance. And in doing so, we started to move some stuff that we had been written for, which was fine. That was needed. Mr. Black has been very good to work with us. He, as a matter of fact, I talked to him one day, and he commented to me. He said, "Well, I see you've got some of your stuff moved." The reason I'm here, like I say, with three acres, there's a lot of things to do. I've got some pictures here, and Mr. Drake outdid me. I don't have forty-eight pictures, but I do have five, okay? If y'all would like to look at these, you could kind of see what I have, what, what we're up against. Some of the trailers. I might add one of the trailers in there, just won first place in the Haltum Homecoming Parade. One of my trailers, I lent it to the girls volleyball team, and they won first place. So anyway, I'll move on real quick. Also, if you can see in these pictures, I have a riding arena that kids in Haltum City come and ride horses. The Haltum and Richland Rodeo Team, some of their people come over there and ride and practice and so on and so forth. You can see we keep the arena perfect. There's no weeds, there's no grass, there's no nothing. In doing this, council members, you have to have some equipment. Arena doesn't get plowed and manicured and all that without some equipment. We have some equipment. I've got some tractors and trailers, and like we stated earlier, I've got a horse trailer, as do a lot of people in South Haltum City. Like John said, you know, I... He, uh, as a matter of fact, I talked to him one day, and he commended me. He said, "Well, I see you've got some of your stuff moved." Uh, the reason I'm here, like I say, with three acres, there's a lot of things to do. I've got some pictures here, and Mr. Drake outdid me. I don't have forty-eight pictures, but I do have five, okay? Uh, if y'all would like to look at these, you could kind of see what I have, what, what we're up against, uh, some of the trailers. I might add one of the trailers in there just won first place in the Haltam Homecoming Parade. One of my trailers, I lent it to the girls volleyball team, and they won first place. So, anyway, I'll move on real quick. Uh, also, if you can see in these pictures, I have a riding arena that kids in Haltam City come and ride horses. Uh, the Haltam and Richland Rodeo Team, some of their people come over there and ride and practice and so on and so forth. You can see we keep the arena perfect. There's no weeds, there's no grass, there's no nothing. In doing this, council members, you have to have some equipment. Arena doesn't get plowed and, and manicured and all that without some equipment. We have some equipment. I've got some tractors and trailers, and, and like we stated earlier, I've got a horse trailer, as do a lot of people in South Haltam City. Uh, like John said, you know, I, I don't know what the solution is, possibly an amendment, but I would like to see it's state somehow that somebody with three acres doesn't have to park everything that they own on improved parking. I've got trailers I haul my tractors on. I've got tractors. I've got a Bobcat to keep all of this stuff up. You can't mow three acres with a, a Sears riding lawnmower very well, you know? I have a tractor and a brush hog. Also, let me, I'll, I'll finish real quick. Some of the stuff that they were saying was in violation is a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty feet off of the street, uh, some of my trailers that are parked, and, uh, so, you know, like John said, maybe an amendment to where if you've got so many square feet or so many acres or something, that, that the ordinance is great in the right application. I don't want my neighbors parking in the front yard and pulling their motors out of their vehicles and, and all that. That's a great, that's a great ordinance, and I, I totally agree with it. But I think it's a little bit non-applicable if you have three to five acres like so many people in South Haltam City do. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rust.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Grzan? You will give us your name and address again for the record, and, uh, you have five minutes.
My name's James Grzan, side twenty-eight, twenty-one Eleanor, there, in Fort Worth, Texas. The grass ordinance that was passed in this city started way back in the latter sixties. Nineteen seventy, the federal government came down North Texas and said that y'all got dirty air, a lot of dust in the air, need to do something about that. Somebody decided that to park a car on an unimproved, uh, parking area, such as dirt, grass, tracked mud into the streets when it rained. When it dried, the cars that came over and run over the mud kicked up dust, which dirtied the air. So, it became very popular with cities to want everything parked on a hard surface. They mainly thought of the car you drive every day or the pickup that you drive in and out, going to the store and what have you. Most people interpreted this to mean they were after keep oil off the ground. Well, that's a good idea, nothing wrong with that. However, that wasn't really what, what the feds were after. They were after clean air, get, to keep the dust down. Well, the city, most cities adopted a paving ordinance, and a hard surface was asphalt or concrete. Code enforcement in this city's decided that they'll make the rulings on what it should be and how it should be and where it should be. I have one officer telling me that the building line is behind the house. I have another officer telling me it's the front of the house. I have another gentleman with this city telling me it's thirty foot from the curb line. Then he had to ask me where the easement was in the street. Well, I think that something should be done, all right. I don't, to park anything, I don't care if it's a car, truck, tractor, that doesn't get moved, grass grows up around it, something gets leaned up on it, next thing you know, there's an old bucket sitting here and a water bucket sitting there, and it becomes distasteful. I know that people that helped me do it on my lot, I do it, I'd love to get real mad at them, but I catch myself doing it. I don't know exactly what the answer to this is, but we've got a weed ordinance, we've got a trash, junk, and debris ordinance. If a trailer or tractor don't come under those headings, if it's not junk, trash, or debris, could we not simply tell the man it needs to be cleaned up around? If it's a hundred and fifty foot off the building or off the street, and it's not going to be pulled out into the street on a regular basis to track mud or dirt in or out, uh, I believe that's a serious consideration. I believe that it does need clarification. I believe the laws that we need are probably in effect. I believe what needs to be said here dates right back to our city manager. I believe this council needs to set some policies and not let the employees set the policies as they see fit. Thank you for your time.
Uh, Mr. Eklund, you're the final speaker, uh, on this, uh, on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm Ray Eklund. I live at twenty-five thirty-two Oakwood Terrace, and, uh, Mr. Rust covered most of the kinds of things I'd like to bring up about South Haltam City. We've often spoke about that end of town being different than the other end of town, and like Mr. Rust, I have, uh, equipment and things just simply to try to maintain the acreage that I have, and my neighbors, uh, all have the same kind of problem with the tractors and things. So, uh, I, one thing that's been brought to my attention the past few months is defining what a hard surface would be appropriate, okay? And I feel like, uh, you know, if a guy was to gravel his driveway or gravel someplace in the back to, to park his vehicles to keep the grass down and keep it nice, maybe that would be appropriate as well. Uh, I understand we're, you know, we're looking for property values and stuff, but I've, I've been to some areas of this town, there's not, there's not a, a concrete driveway in the whole street, so, uh, and we should keep that in mind as, as we try to bring the city up, and we can't, we can't fix the entire property all at one time. Uh, you know, we're trying to go in steps to get these things done, so, uh, again, like Mr. Rust said, I, I believe, uh, the building line would probably be a good place to say, you know, your stuff's a hundred feet off the street, it's not bothering anybody. That's probably appropriate, you know, and, uh, we can enjoy the, the lifestyle that we do here in Haltam City. I think those kinds of things, the horse people are, are often prevalent, uh, you know, and their love of horses and, and things, and, and they, that's why we're here, because we can have an acre, two acres, or three acres, or four acres, I, and still have the enjoyment of being in an urban environment, you know, good schools for our kids, and, uh, close to entertainment and, and those kinds of things. So, uh, that's why we're here, that's why we like to stay, and, and I'd like for the city to continue to keep in mind that these different lifestyles within our bounds need to be considered as we go forward with our rules. So, again, I think the building line would be reasonable, uh, and maybe we should look at each case individually. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Uh, Councilmember Williams, uh, since you placed this item on the agenda, tell us what you're asking from this council tonight.
What I'd like to ask the council to do is, uh, send this item to Planning and Zoning. Uh, I'd like for the, uh, the Rust family and the Eklund family, and, uh, I see Joanne McCubbins out there, she's, uh, also, uh, affected by this. I'd like to see that they were, uh, made knowledgeable on when that meeting would take place, uh, where they could bring their concerns to the P and C. I, like Mr. Eklund says, I, I think it's an excellent ordinance. Uh, I think it just needs a little tweaking. You know, there are, are people who want to park something there in the very back of the house, and you go to putting all the concrete back there and adding the drainage problem. Uh, we need as much soil as we can to absorb as much rain as we can, and so I, I think we're saying that, Mayor, if that's agreeable to the people that spoke tonight, I would like to send that to the Planning and Zoning Board and have those...
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir, and it might, the rest of the council may want to comment on it or something. I, I don't know if they'd be in favor of that or not, but I, I think it's just something we need to address to make it more applicable for everyone.
Let's go ahead and get a second to that motion, and then we'll have whatever comments. Uh, Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I'll second Councilmember Williams' motion.
Okay, we have a motion a second. Any comments, any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Sutton?
Yeah, I would, uh, ask if this would be, uh, relative to commercial or residential. I would think that it makes sense for residential, but not for commercial. And so if we could send that to Planning and Zoning, I think that would be, uh, maybe one of the stipulations that we would consider along with that. If you'd consider that a friendly amendment, John?
I'm not, is the chief, fire chief still here? I think we have a, uh, an ordinance covering that, uh, on, uh, approv, on commercial for approved hard surfaces. I think there's a, uh, a deal in there that covers that, but that's, that's a good id-
So, it would just cover for residential?
Yes, this is just for, for, uh, residential and for the, the horse, is, for lack of a better word, the horse people.
Horse people, okay. That, that sounds good.
People that have the horses or...
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? If you will, register your vote, please, and that passes by unanimous vote. To just, uh, wrap this up, uh, we will continue this council meeting next Monday night. Uh, is that correct? Uh, from a legal point of view, we can, we can do this? Uh, how do we do this?
We can do this, but we're going to post it. Are we not, Ms. City Secretary?
Excuse me. Just excuse me, Mayor. There's, there is an item that I don't know if you guys do want to take any action on, on item fourteen about, um, the nominations for the TAD board. Those nominations are due Wednesday, uh, so if, if we delay that, this body will not be able to place any nominations if it so chooses, so that may be something, there may not be anything they want to act on or not, but, um, just want to bring that to your attention.
Okay, I have Councilmember Williams, Branson, and Hurley in that order, please.
I, did you?
No. John.
Oh, John.
I'll defer to you.
Oh, I was going to recommend that we accepted the nomination that we were given-
Okay.
-so that we can participate.
Okay, uh, is that in the form of a motion? Okay, uh, Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Williams?
I was too late.
Okay, uh, those in favor of the motion indicate, and that passes by unanimous vote. Next Monday night, we'll have a council meeting preceded by a workshop on the city charter revisions.
Is this to begin at six P.M.?
Whatever.
Six P.M.?
Fine with me.
How about six P.M.?
Sounds fine.
Okay, uh, there being no one absent here tonight, there is no, uh, action to be taken on item number twenty-one. We stand adjourned.